Call to order this meeting of the Westford School Committee for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. This meeting is being recorded and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Order this meeting of the Westford School Committee for Tuesday.
Controloquism.
All right, we're going to start with the consent agenda. So we had two versions of meeting minutes in the packet and some warrants. Motion to approve the consent agenda. So moves. Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, so next up is going to be public comment. Since tonight is the budget hearing, if you have non-budget item commentary to talk about, that would be during this public comment. It's for any, well, it's always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share your thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom, so raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist and unmuted or in person at the microphone. Please introduce yourself and give your address. And like I said, if it is about the budget, that point will come later. Any public comment? Okay, great. Thank you. We'll move on to informational updates with the superintendent.
We just have one. You want to go ahead and share?
Yes, this afternoon, we received an exciting email update from Jeff Bunyan, who's the athletic director at Westford Academy, telling us that Westford Academy has been accepted as a unified champion school by the Massachusetts Special Olympics. And so this means that this spring, we will have our first sport. It's going to be the track and field sport that we'll be running at WA. And more information will be forthcoming from the athletic department as we get closer to that.
Cool. Thanks very much. That's it. School committee updates?
Happy New Year.
Yeah. I was just going to share a reminder for the Who We Are project, which is a screening of the film Who We Are. There's a subtitle that I'm blanking on. Oh, Who We Are: A Chronicle of Racism in America. That is going to be hosted at WA on January 17th at 6:30 with a facilitated reflection question and answer discussion upon completion of the film. That's in principal email newsletters if you are interested in RSVPing for that. That's all I have for updates. Student representatives.
The only really thing that's happening is on January 11th, juniors and sophomores have their career exploration breakfast and that we have midterm starting January 17th.
Thank you, Maisha.
Well, good luck.
Done after this.
Okay, so we're going to start our business part of the agenda by hearing some detail, updates and details. Do you have the slide deck?
I do.
That was sent. Is that in the packet again?
No, we didn't. No, we'll post it in the packet after the meeting.
Okay, so there's some updates to the budget presentation slides that we're going to walk through. There'll be time for committee discussion and comments. And then we will move into the budget public hearing, which you'll know when we do that because it takes a formal vote to open it. Okay?
So this is now our third meeting discussing the budget. So the first, what I've done is I've just continued to update the initial slide deck that I shared with you. So the first, the first, you know, 33 slides were from that original presentation. Then in our meeting on the 18th, we talked about specifically the different impacts of WA with the different FTE reductions that we were talking about in both of the, in both of the budget proposals. And so tonight, what, what we were looking at was to talk about some of those other impacts that we didn't address when we were talking about the WA FTE. So the interventionists, the administration, and well, we're also talking about a couple of things that we, that we didn't highlight in the agenda, but also the reading, the literacy specialists and the reading teachers. And then we also have a little bit more of that financial information, talking about the, the current, the current costs for the 18 to 22-year-old program as well too. So just kind of letting people know. You're all aware of that, but anybody who might be joining us for the first time, reminding them that this is our third conversation about the budget. We've had full conversations previous to that. So if you go to slide 46, Catherine.
And I just have to say, I appreciate that's all one document that we just keep updating. Because as I've gone back through the years.
And you find different.
Different files and everything. I appreciate this. Forty-six.
Forty-six. Thank you. So the first thing, the first thing we're just going to talk about was the, the district-wide administration. So if, and this is in the, the no override budget. So in order to stay within the proposition two and a half constraints, we had identified reducing 3.0 FTE for district-wide administration. One would be the elimination of the Director of Equity, Curriculum and Instruction position. In order to do that, then we would be taking those leadership responsibilities and they would be divided between the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. And building-based administration, the principals and assistant principals would also need to add to their support for instructional leadership as well too. The different types of things that people might not necessarily be aware of, but that would be everything from different grants that, that are currently, that are currently, I can't think of the word besides.
Pursued?
Pursued, monitored, drafted even.
Entitlement, yeah.
The entitlement grants. Those are the types of things that, that we would be dividing up, overseeing the English language learner department, homeschool.
Applications.
Homeschool applications and monitoring that progress, different things like that, in addition to overseeing and leading all of the curriculum coordinators.
Professional development.
And all the professional development overseeing that. And then the second part is eliminating the, the 2.0 FTE curriculum coordinators at the elementary level. So we would, we currently have, we currently have a STEM and Humanities curriculum coordinator for K to 2 and 3 to 5. And we would just have, instead of having four of those positions, we would have two and we would make it pre-K to 5, a STEM and then a Humanities person. And so that would be, the, the impact there would, it would decrease their ability to be in all the different schools and provide the instructional coaching that they have, that they do provide. It would also increase the number of teacher evaluations that would be distributed. Well, we said here, the idea of that they'd be identifying and supporting a larger this moment in time, especially with the different curriculum rollout that we are, that we're working on now. And just the idea of being able to proactively be responsive, be proactively pay attention to what's going on with the state standards and to be able to help roll that out. One of the conversations we were having today were just with the STEM coordinators who had already participated in some statewide PD that was talking about new MCAS tests, which we're not going to see for two years, but the fact that it's going to, the way that it can be proactively impacted and the way we can be making shifts and changes in, in instructional practices and even just looking at our curriculum, little things like that, I say little, it seems like a little thing, but that's actually, it has a huge impact. And I, it's, it's one of those things where you've all seen them in action, right? So you went on the tours and saw the work that they were doing. So I feel like I don't need to explain it to you necessarily, the impact of that. But I'm trying to explain it to a wider audience and forgive me if I failed that, but anybody can jump in and, and assist with, with any of that. So that's our first. Last time when we did this, we kind of went through them and I stopped for questions with each one. So I was planning to do that again because they're all very different. I don't know if anybody, if, if any of the committee members have any questions about that.
Yeah, Ming Chen.
Yeah, I think like for years I have been actually asking about like optimization on this department. The K to 2 and 3 to 5 separate probably is something Westford specific. Like for other like districts, they have K to 5 schools. I doubt they have like K to 2 and 3 to 5 as like four different coordinators, right? So other districts as large as ours, they can do it with two people. So like, why can't we do it with two people? So those are the things which I mentioned in like past couple of years, since I was on the committee, I feel like it needs to be optimized. I feel like this should go into the, even go into the override budget, even if, let's say, because I feel those are the things, the district, we need to actually spend our money wisely. We have an obligation to our actual taxpayers. And then those are the things which we should do. We should not actually say, oh, for the override budget, we're going to actually do exactly what we do today. We should actually reduce the amount being asked. That's the thing which I mentioned last time. I think like with the amount being asked today, I think there is no chance it can ever pass. So really, those are the things we need to do. And then, and then the director position, we have run the district without this position for many, many years. So if we can do it for so many years, then why do we need to run now?
Yeah, well, that position, there was curriculum like reorganized, right, from the assistant superintendent.
HR director essentially. So it was just a shift.
I hear you though. Reaction? Sorry, it looked like you were going to say something.
I guess I better. Well, I, same reaction to that. Like you can't, I can't treat that Director of Equity, Curriculum and Instruction in the same way because we got rid of an HR, we reorganized HR and put them under the assistant superintendent, who previously did that, did most of that work. So I would not look at that in an override budget at all. And then I leave it to, yeah, that's all. That was my other comment.
I did want to just kind of come in on the curriculum coordinator. I know we have, you know, I will agree with, with Ming Chen. It's kind of something I've thought about. Now, I would say in other districts, if they do have a K to 5, which is typical, because obviously that K to 2, 3 to 5 is very specific to Westford. My experience is that they have had like a science curriculum coordinator, a math curriculum coordinator. So we have done some kind of amalgamating. But I do often question, I know in our, in the upper schools, we have 6 through 12. And I do wonder anyway, in the, the idea of efficiency and transitions and planning, should we be considering, you know, changing those departments to be that more pre-K to 5 and following in the spirit of how we do that upper schools as well? Just from, not, not just from a cost perspective, but also in terms of transition and planning, you know, and they have bigger caseloads up to the middle school and high school across. So it's, I just wonder, is it something worth kind of maybe just examining a little bit more of on? But I have to say, I do, I've seen the, the, I've seen that role in action when I worked in a previous district. It's not, it's not a role that I ever had as a teacher in, in my time teaching prior to moving to the States. However, I see real value in that role and the support it gives for teachers in a way that what would have been hours of research and conversations to, you know, to try and find out my own, you know, information on a specific area of, you know, I have this child, they're really struggling with this concept of math. I just, you know, I can't figure it out. To be able to go to someone who's essentially specialized in that role is really valuable and I've seen it in practice. So I'm not diminishing the role in any way. I think it's, it's of huge value to the district and actually to our teachers where we're, we're trying to be conscious of their time and a lot of what we ask of them already. So it is a very supportive role to our classroom teachers. But I just would like to maybe consider that, you know, we, we examine how we have that structured.
So I, I think, unless you were in a.
I was going to just respond to a couple of different thoughts. I think one of the things to consider, which is slightly different when we look at our comparison to other districts is our, our breakdown of K to 2 and 3 to 5 is also different, right? And so Catherine's right in that historically, we have had a different model. We had a similar number. We just had a different model. And one of the things that I think poses the challenge at the elementary level, which is different than 6 through 12, is the fact that the teachers, 6 through 12, are, they are content specialists in specific ways. And so the work of the curriculum coordinators and the way in which they're providing the support in the departments, it's just different by nature. Whereas the elementary schools, the general education teachers have to be the content providers for all areas. And so I think the demands that then are placed upon the curriculum coordinators to, to be those true experts in those content areas, it's just greater. So I think that's the difference in when we compare it like to 6 through 12 versus the, 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 the grade span of pre-K to 5. And so when we adjusted the focus to go with STEM and Humanities and pre-K to 2 and 3 to 5, what we did is we, we no longer had an ELA, a math, a science, and a social studies curriculum coordinator. So the distribution of their support to the schools was just shifted. But if you go to two people, you are now asking them to support six schools and a larger number of teachers that they're covering. So I think that's the challenge with that model. And that's the difference in, in, in what we're talking about.
I appreciate that explanation. And I think that that helps give some understanding as to why from administration, that's in the no override budget instead of in the override budget. But it is the committee's will to, to approve a budget. And so we can circle back to that by, by the, before our vote on the 16th and see if there's a majority support for that. So it's, it's not off the table or anything. Any other thoughts on this slide before we?
Okay. Okay, the next two slides are specifically talking about the middle schools. And so the first, the first one's going to talk about the reading positions. And so as a reminder, there are two reading teachers, one at each middle school. It's a general education course. It's one of the integrated arts specials, if you will, but there is an exit and entrance criteria for students to be placed in the classes. So you can see here that they're teaching explicit reading skills, including literal and inferential comprehension, reading strategy, story elements, vocabulary. The students, if, if we were to make this reduction, then those students would have to have someplace to go, right? The class would go away and so they would have to have someplace to go. One thing that this chart doesn't reflect is that, as I said, it takes place in the integrated arts block during middle school. So there's actually two periods of it. So then when you look across and you see that in grade six, there's 17 at Stony Brook and 12 at Blanchard, there's not 17 in one class. That would be most likely split in half. It might not be split evenly, but half of the students would be in the first class and then they would go to their other specials, the next block. Is everybody following that so far? Right? So that when we then say that the students would have, they'd have to be going to a different class and we talk about them going to the world language classes, or they could also, if they, if they required the, the support, they could also be enrolled in an, in the academic coach class that is going to be talked about in the next slide as well too. So that would be one of the impacts for those seventh grade students right now, specifically, those seventh grade students, they would potentially be going into a world language class that would be in part two of eighth grade because students take a world language in seventh and eighth grade. And so they would have missed the seventh grade instruction and they would be placed in eighth grade. Now, we do that when students move into town who haven't had that, who haven't had that experience in a different, in a different town. And so it's not, it wouldn't be something that is unheard of. And so that's just, those are the, the different elements to their, to that position.
Can I ask for those reading teachers? Dr. Chu, what is the typical qualification for, are they like literacy specialists? Are they OG certified? Are they gen ed teachers? What typically is that teacher in, in that class and kind of the profile of the students in, in that class?
So they, they, they didn't necessarily have to have, they haven't been literacy specialists, right? But they have been, the, the experience, they're general edu, they have their, they have their, the people who are in it right now have specific certifications. I believe they might both have elementary certification and had had experience with reading instruction in the first place. But no, they're not OG certified. It's, again, like I said, it was, it's a general education reading class.
But the profile of the student in there, based on what it was saying that's being taught in the class, it sounds to me like this is, this isn't just an elective. It's for students who.
It's for students who, who have, who have the, the teachers, previous teachers have identified that they could benefit from additional reading support.
But they don't necessarily have a dyslexia or dysgraphia diagnosis or anything like that?
And you can see that the skills that they're working on at the top of the slide where it calls out.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
I want to wait until the next slide because I, I probably have a question.
It could be linked together.
Because yeah, I have question between these two slides with the positions.
Right. So currently at both middle schools, there are, there are, there are interventions as well too. There is a reading interventionist and a math interventionist at both of the middle schools. And so if we were to eliminate that, the interventionists provide ideally temporary supports for students who might be struggling with a specific concept. They, it's not a, it's not a scheduled class. It's something that students would be either working with the interventionists during their scheduled math or ELA class, or they might, they might miss another subject for a short period of time in order to work with them independently. They might work with them during advisory as well too. But they're providing different skill-based support following the suggestion of the classroom teachers.
And they're really providing a double dose of that general education skill set. So if there's a certain skill set that they're struggling with, there's that flexibility for somebody to go in and just work on fractions on that certain day.
So, so for example, we have students in reading sections and then we have students in reading intervention. How do we qualify what a teacher and then what are going to be doing differently in these two sections? And are students being put into both sections or only one, or only the other? So like, what's the difference between, between those?
I, I don't believe any students who are in the reading class are receiving reading intervention. The reading intervention is more of a temporary thing that might be helping a student in a specific unit. It could be, it could be helping them in their ELA class, but it could also be support in their science or helping them with, with more technical language as well too. But it's a temporary support. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
Yeah, I'm still confused about like, you have reading intervention and then you have reading coaching. So like.
So they could be like pulling students out mid-period versus a more authentic section that students are enrolled in, right?
But like the ELA teacher is also teaching the student.
That's why, that's why, that's what Courtney said. In many cases, it's a double dose of a general education. It's not special education.
It looks like the interventionists are serving more students because of the, I'm guessing, a smaller delivery of the service. Could be within the classroom, could be.
Could be both.
Pullout or both. But based on the previous slide, right, the 29, 29, 21, those are full students enrolled right now in specific reading classes under a licensed teacher.
Correct.
So when we say like we have, say, 52 in reading intervention currently, that's not necessarily that there's going to be 52 next month or next semester. This could.
I think that's fluid. I think it changes.
It says that they're seeing them regularly. The data that they gave us is that they're seeing them regularly, but it's not a scheduled, it's not a, it's not a scheduled thing. So I would say that they, when they say regularly, it, it might be they're, they're consistently checking in with certain students.
But they may meet criteria to, to exit out of intervention.
So, so, so do they, when do they go to say the interventionist?
When, when you, how do you identify in for the interventionist? Is it the same identification? Is it a prior teacher or something?
It would be, it would be something if, 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 if the teacher or even if a student was struggling and it came up with, in conversations with parents, that they were struggling with a specific thing, it would be an extra layer in the, in the multi-tiered system of support that they could be providing for, again, for temporary, for temporary support. The idea of the interventions is that they're, they're designed to be temporary supports.
Would they be essentially 504 students then? Or possibly?
Could be.
There could be, there could be.
Okay, I want to circle back to Ming Chen.
Yeah, I'm still a little bit confused because, sorry about that, but because like you say, like the 52 not, not regularly being seen by the interventionist, right? So, so those 52 students are always like seeing the interventionist. And then like, are they, are they seeing the teacher during the ELA block or like outside the ELA, ELA block?
So it could be, it could be during the ELA, ELA block. It could be instead of, you know, they're, they were missing 15 minutes of another class. It could be during advisory. It could be, it, it, it happens at different times.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I think my.
They're very different.
Spread out the love. Yeah, go ahead.
Dr. Chu, would you think it'd be a fair inference to say that lacking the reading interventionists, we'd see more numbers in the reading class year on year? That the reading intervention might keep kids who need occasional pullout from needing the full year or being recommended for the full year?
I, I, I don't necessarily know if it would, if it would, if they would end up in the reading class. I feel like the interventions have helped them make progress in their, in, in the various content areas. Like that's why I said sometimes it literally could be helping them with science. It could be helping more in social studies with something that they're, that they're reading, that it's not necessarily the reading class for the most part is more of a traditional reading class where they're working on different skills, but then they're working on either independent reading or a group or, 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 or a book together. And it's, it's very different than the interventions are providing support to the content that is being provided in other classes.
Is that then, and, and please forgive me for trying to kind of get this straight in my head as we, we figured out, the reading and math intervention seems similar in my understanding of what the academic coaching is and some of those kind of classes we saw. Because they, my understanding is, is that's a, a period, a scheduled period for students to go and engage with the teacher about what's happening, kind of content that's happening in other classes and get other support. So it, it feels to me, or my understanding almost feels like it's a kind of doubling up, or forgive me if, if my understanding is wrong.
The math and the reading interventionists had traditionally been focused on, on those specific skills. And the academic coaches that exist currently at the middle school level, they're, the primary function was at first looking at executive functioning in general, right? However, one of the things, and it's, and the models aren't exactly the same in both of the schools right now. From my experience as, as one of the principals, I know the academic coach had a very specific room where then we had the interventionist working out of that room as well too. So in a, in a way, it became sort of an academic center as well too. Students had, academic coach class was actually scheduled into there, but then the interventionists were also there and available to help support that class, support students in academic coaching, and then to push into other classes as well too. It's, it's, it's a layer of support in many ways. What, and I think you see this at all levels. I know at the middle school level, I think it, it also provides a, a greater level of social emotional support in terms of, it, it's a double-edged sword. There are students who don't want to go to an interventionist and the stigma that they fear, that would be, that would result if they were receiving any extra help. And then the idea of students being able to break something down in a smaller group or with one or two individuals that can help develop confidence in that as well too. So it is, I think you can find examples of both. But I think that that's one of the other pieces that the, that the, that the interventionists can provide. And I think that's true at all levels. I think it is different at the elementary level than it is at the middle school level. In terms of, in terms of what the interventionists are doing, and we can talk about that as we talk more about the elementary schools as well too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Doctor Chu mentioned like academic coach, that's, that's a different position, right? That's the third position.
Yeah.
So we have the reading position, the interventionist position, and then the coach position.
Correct.
And then that, what kind of different things?
A rich layer of supports.
Yeah, multi, multi-tiered system of supports. To prevent students, I would imagine, from going into special education, potentially higher costs like a out-of-district placement. If you can keep kids in district and on, you know, timelines and schedules of progress, you potentially limit some of those costs too. So some of this.
I would, I would say, I would say that that's true.
Efficiency and optimization, but we're also talking about, you know.
Right, and, and also meeting our obligation to provide, to, to provide multi-tiered systems of support, which is differentiation of general education.
Checking us on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Slightly switched to elementary?
So the, the model that we were talking about at the elementary level would be eliminating all of the interventionist position, which are twenty-six, there's eleven reading interventionists and there's fifteen math interventionists. Currently, you can see there that they provide support during the thirty-minute wind blocks with targeted small group instruction. And that's been a part of their MTSS program for years. Without that, then those supports would fall on the shoulders of the general education teacher. Again, they're, ideally, they're designed to be temporary interventions that are helping students work on a specific skill. I think the difference here at the elementary level is that it, it would be even more skill-based and less responsive to the actual content in the classroom. They might have very different things that they have identified. And so they will organize students in different ways and say, okay, this, these five students were all, all exhibiting.
In like their assessments or something.
Struggle in a specific area, so now we're going to bring them together at this time and, and work together. What we, what we talked about in our proposal was to then hire an academic coach at each elementary school, which would be able to provide some of these supports, not necessarily following the same model that exists at the, at the, at the middle school, because that is a scheduled class, right? But the academic coach would then be available to provide interventions, would not be able to support as many students at a time.
Doctor Chu, is one interventionist equivalent to one full-time equivalent position, or is it less?
So, the difference is the interventionists work a shorter.
Shorter schedule, shorter contract.
Shorter contract year, right?
Yeah.
But, but it is a full-time.
Correct.
Equivalent, we, we, we would, we, we do consider it a full.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not, it's not on that step seven of a master's scale that you gave us before, it's, but it's something. Correct, got it, okay.
But their caseload would be like a full, like a Monday to Friday caseloads. They're not doing like four days a week. I'm trying to remember their hours.
There's one school that's in there.
Ms. Boylan is jumping up and down because she has some disinformation that I shared.
I was just going to say they also don't work a full day.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Can I repeat that for the mic?
She said they don't work a full day.
So it's either a four-hour day or a five-hour day.
The, the difference, why I say that we still consider them, in, in our overall FTE count though, we are counting them as a full, they are full-time equipped for their, for their job. Their job is not, doesn't have the same hourly demands as, exactly, exactly.
But what I would be interested to see is comparison is caseload. So how many hours of interve- like intervention or students versus an academic coach caseload and hours of student time?
What, what our suggestion would be is that the academic coaches would actually be full, they would follow this. I said they wouldn't follow the same model as they do at the middle school, but I meant in terms of having a scheduled class, like the students would be scheduled into the class, but the academic coaches at the middle schools work a full day, the full year.
The school day, yeah.
Yeah.
So that would, so that would still be our recommendation, that these academic coaches would work the full school year, the full school day, to be available to work with students all day long. Um as opposed to the hourly, the, 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 the hours that our current interventionists are contracted for, which is less.
Which I understand, but.
Did that answer your question?
No, sorry.
So could you repeat it then?
It, it, it might help maybe if I can get it more numbers at some point in. Oh, and.
Ms. Cataldo does.
Oh.
Could, would you mind, if you're going to, which numbers are your?
I have numbers of intervention children.
Perfect.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what they're hoping to hear.
Is that okay? So, yeah, okay.
Just introduce yourself.
Thank you.
Sure. Jennifer Cataldo, STEM coordinator for grades three through five.
Thank you.
Um, we have currently in the grades K through two, seventy-plus students who are receiving math intervention. And in grades three through five, we have over one hundred and fifty students who are receiving math intervention. And it's a little different in the K through two versus the three through five. The K through two has blocks that they find time to see those children within the day. Whereas with the K, with the three through five, there are these wind blocks that you're talking about. And during the wind block, an interventionist will see between, sometimes even one, but up to four children at a time, thirty minutes a day, five days a week, and work on specific skills. And it is temporary in the sense that like we just finished our iReady diagnostic number two. And I was looking at the data today, there were several students who are on math caseload who are now going to be off of caseload because of that intervention that they received. Whereas other students who were kind of cuspy last time, now that, now it's their turn to get into the math intervention. And it's been.
Right.
And then go off.
Yeah.
It's, so it's been a super successful model to get kids back up to grade level. Um, and so we've seen that to be excellent. So, so without interventionists, that's over two hundred children who are struggling in math, who are regular ed kids, struggling in math right now, who would not be getting those supports.
Who would be like one of, in a class with twenty-two other kids with a teacher trying to teach to differentiate from the front of the room.
And if you change that to a coach, one coach, instead of three interventionists, there's one person now. So it's going to be reduced by a third at least.
That's what I was trying to get at, like that three, you know, the caseload for three, even though if they're not full, full-time, but close enough to it.
It's such a.
Caseload, yeah.
Such a bang for your buck in Westford, because they are, right now, these are certified teachers who have come back to do this job at an hourly rate of like thirty dollars an hour. Uh, they can get paid up to a hundred dollars an hour to do tutoring outside of school, if they do that for here. So it's a big bang for your buck to have these interventionists, and I think it's what makes Westford become such an excellence, have such excellence later on, because these kids all catch up and then do beautifully when they go to middle and high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any reactions, um, questions?
I would just query, is, is one academic coach enough? If, if, if we end up having to do this, is one academic coach enough per school considering we've got, you know, six, twenty-six across, what's that, you know, we've, on average, six people currently providing this similar service.
And this.
I think that's an excellent question.
Yeah.
I, I didn't preface this whole night the way that I have the other nights, which is.
Yeah.
We don't want.
This is not what, this is what our true recommendations are. This is what we're saying that we would need to do if we weren't able to.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so that's kind of an important thing. I don't want anyone to think that I'm actually arguing for this model.
No, no, no.
Arguing for this model.
But even still, if this is still a budget we have to vote on.
It's a good question.
It would be great to, to get those numbers for the reading.
Yeah.
So it's what, over two hundred and twenty students in math, how many in reading?
Yeah.
Right.
From the interventionist.
We have, we have some of them, we'll, we just don't have them from all the schools, so I couldn't give you the full number.
Appreciate that.
But we will get it to you.
Okay. Do you want to go into the next slide, Doctor Chu?
So next is literacy specialists.
Ready, yeah. So, um, we currently have six literacy specialists in our K to two schools. Each school has two. And so this would be reducing that to one at each K to two school. And so as you can see, the groups, the, the, the size would increase from one to three students at a time to three to five students. Um, it's going to have a massive impact on, on the way in which they provide support as well too. I think in a similar way, even looking at data, the way that Ms. Cataldo was just talking about, I think that's going to be something that, it, it would be impacted just on the number of students that they're trying to support. And then the other piece there is that our literacy specialists have been instrumental in supporting both UFLI and the EL program. EL is being currently rolled out at the three to five school, and they'll be rolling it out at the K to two school next year. They've been helping with the UFLI implementation and mastery this year. And then it's, it would have a significant impact on the number of kindergarten students that they would be able to support.
Yeah.
Can I just clarify, are literacy, literacy specialists, they wouldn't be certified in Horton Gilliam? Would they, would any of those be working?
They don't need to be, but some are.
Yeah.
But would they be working with students who on their IP's have been identified with as dyslex, with dyslexia?
There might be a small um sampling where that does happen. If a school does not have.
Yeah.
Um, that type of support available or enough of support.
So, because my concern with this particular one is that we potentially fall into a kind of legal issues of students who have been identified on IP's needing um that, that support. And if some of our literacy specialists aren't available, is that, you know, we would have to make sure we have enough for that caseload.
Still have to make that happen.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think, yeah, the issue there would be is that we would meet all of our legal.
Yes, but it might require spending, like if we don't have enough people qualified to teach those students. So what we might be saving in, in, on one side of the budget, we may end up, because we know it's not a cheap thing to do to get those staff certified, so um it, it would be just something I think that would be worth um just looking at.
Might not, it might not cost additional money. It might, it might actually just mean fewer students who don't require the services would be getting the services as well. And I'm talking about the general education.
The general ed, yeah.
But you're right, it could have an effect.
Yeah.
So those, like, three slides were related to elementary multi-tiered supports. Before we move on to the eighteen to twenty-two year-old transition program. Any final questions or thoughts there?
Um, so like, say, one, two, two, one, two, three students on a, are they, are they like, one, two, three students at the same time or different times?
Yeah, it's in a group.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, 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 so it's going to be.
Case load is much larger than that. They're just saying like the small groups that they're working with would.
So they would be working with one, two, three students, one or two, or sometimes three?
Yeah.
And then instead of that, you may be now going to be working with three, four, or five students.
Three, four, five, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's um interesting to, to, interesting, valuable to think about not only the, sort of what we're losing with these positions being reduced, but what that, what the corresponding change to the tier one.
Right.
Burden becomes, right, to the, that level of differentiation that has to happen in the classroom. So um it's sort of like captured in the impacts you have here, but you know, for our, for our elementary classroom teachers, I think it's, I'm sure they would um have a lot to say.
Right.
And I, if I can just add to that, yeah, I think those supports are important to the classroom teachers. And I think, you know, people talk about focusing on direct instruction and those delivering it, but, you know, in the classroom. But I think, again, the teachers in the classroom lean on this heavily, but also I think in attracting new teachers to the district. I think, I'm imagining teachers look for these sorts of things. I imagine when they come, they ask about what sort of intervention and other supports that they'll have as classroom teachers.
Okay, we can move to the next slide.
So when we look at, we were talking about the, the, looking at the transition program, the eighteen to twenty-two year-old transition program at WA. And currently this year, there are twelve students who are, who are attending.
I just want to, I just want to, I, just as you started talking, I want to remind people that this is in both versions of the budget.
Yes, it is.
This change for this slide.
Thank you, thank you very much, yes. So we have proposed um adding three point four FTE positions in order to support an eighteen to twenty-two-year-old um program at, well, within the district, right? Um, which would be a, one, um, special education teacher with transition experience and two, um, job coaches. And then point four of helping with the, the different administrative aspects of the program and connecting the program as well too. And so the cost currently, we're, we are spending, you know, just over a million dollars this year for student, the twelve students attending an alternative program, because we are not able to provide for their needs in the district. You can see the breakdown between tuition costs and the transportation costs. Now, in FY twenty-five, we, uh, we are anticipating, we have eight students who are, who are exiting WA and would be entering into the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program, um, who'd be completing their four years of study in June. And so we would project that with a program, now we don't know for sure if they would all specifically, um, if they would choose this program or if the team would, if the team would recommend this program. But we do believe right now, if we were to able to establish the program that we're talking about, that the majority of them would be interested in that and that we have one student who is currently out of district who would be interested in coming back to be in, be in Westford. Then in FY twenty-six, we'd continue to program for those same students. In FY twenty-seven, our projection is that based on the current program that exists now at, at WA, that one additional student would be ready to enter that program. And then FY twenty-eight, um, three students would, would be ready, based on the students that are currently enrolled at Westford Academy, who would then be aging into the eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program.
Are any of the students that we see on this track have specific needs that we don't think would be met by this program? Or is this a capture of?
This is a capture, this is a capture of students who we, we think would be appropriate for this program.
Right, okay. And then my next question would be for FY twenty-five, have those conversations started to happen a little bit? Or is that too early for?
I, I, I do, I know believe, I, I know that the questions have been asked, and I know parents have been very interested in, as to whether or not we were going to have a program.
Okay.
Um, so it depends on where they, when, where they're at in the team process, but I know that the questions have been asked and they've been talking about it in some cases for um, uh, the last two years.
Okay.
And even with a program such as this, there would still be a level of students who would require support services beyond what we can provide. So we're really trying to capture the students who are in private or public day placements that might be costing, you know, between thirty-nine thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year in tuition.
Can, can someone remind me, just because I can't pull it up, what, what did we have budgeted for this program?
Two thirty.
Two thirty?
Yeah, two thirty for the, for the three point four, for LTE. Um, I don't know how much the setup cost would be for first year.
Yeah, can you speak to that a little bit? I, I've been privy to some of this.
Yeah, so we, outside of what those costs are, we don't anticipate there'd be significant costs for the setup. If, if we were to bring them here, then I know that with our in-house maintenance, we'd be able to construct the potential living, the, the apartment-type dwelling that would be, um, that we'd want to have with, with the program for different living skills. We already have a, a, a large functioning kitchen here in the building that we'd be able to use for, for that, for that component as well too. So we, we, at one point, we had included setup costs, but we actually don't think that they would be necessary. One of the things that we continue to do is we continue to, we've requested funding through capital for an electric van, and that would, that would be very important for this program so that then students would be able to be transported to different um community areas for job-related activities.
Would some of these students still require transportation within um the district? So it's not like we would be um removing any transportation costs because they would, some, we may still have some transportation needs to and from the program.
It, it could be, it could, it would be different costs, right? So it would be, you're about, right, it would be, it would be our internal.
Yeah.
Costs and, and you, in theory, you know, potentially. costs and, and you, in theory, you know, potentially a number of the students would be able to be transported together in, in one, as opposed to depending on where their placements are now, each one could have a, have their own unique transportation cost.
That would be significant.
So in order for it to break even, we need four plus students to enroll in this program.
One question I, or comment I sort of hear from some of the emails, we thank you for everybody who, we've been hearing some questions start coming in. And I feel like one thing I hear is sort of like, what, what are we doing to think about things differently? To like, knowing the constraints we're under, how are we thinking about providing services in different ways and stuff? And although it's delicate to make this sort of a financial selling point, I, I guess, for lack of a better word. But it, it's, it's an example, I think, to not miss that this is a way of delivering something that we have been in a different way that has benefits
Right.
and a different price tag.
Right.
And it's no different than when we had to add another classroom for a reach classroom. Or when several years ago, we needed to start a medically complex classroom for the preschool or a deaf heart of hearing classroom for a number of years that we had to, to run that. So you're just looking at that population and seeing how we can save that money.
I mean financially, it's like, I mean, financially, it seems to be a very solid program in terms of, you know, A, it's saving money, but also then the other side of it is, is it's the right thing to do. It's the right thing to have our.
That's what I mean, it's like a little.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a pretty solid program.
So how, can you just explain how the, is that, um, how are we accounting for this in the budgeting? Right, like, I mean, I, I know this has the, the two hundred and thirty thousand attached to it, but I just, um, but are we accounting for the offset of the out of district placements that we, we might not realize? Or we just can't do that until it happens?
Yeah.
And I think that's part of that, like, the potential of this program, the fruits of it may not be realized for a few years down the road.
Right.
But, but it's there and it makes sense from a number of different lenses.
And in many ways, what it helps is, one of the things we've been trying to do is get to a point where, if possible, our special education tuition costs can be more predictable.
Right.
Right, and or, as we talk about building our special education stabilization fund, which then allows us to just be more predictive, you know, and, and, and how we do that, this is the same idea that if we have this program and specifically as our families know about it and see it and get excited about it, then it's like, then you will know, you know, for a number of years that this is something that they're, that they're actually excited to be participating in, knowing that their, their, that, that their children would be able to participate in a program here in Westford that will be connecting them to Westford organizations
Their community.
in, in their own community.
Yep.
Which I think is huge.
Yep. Any final thoughts on that? I just saw the clock and realized we're, just want to move us on to, so the next slide is just some, so.
Oh, sure. So, um, one of the things that we talked about, we talked about this with the joint chairs, Kristen Lass, the town manager, and I, we're planning to, we're calling it a roadshow, but just do different informational sessions about the budget situation. The two of us going together to talk about the two different budgets, how we, how we've arrived at the two different budgets, what the impact of the two different budgets are. So we know some of the events that we're planning to, to have, and we just wanted to start sharing that with people as well, too. So on the twenty-fourth, at seven thirty, we're going to be talking with the League of Women Voters. I'm a little, do you know the answer to this? Because I'm a little confused by the in-person aired on Westford Cat. We're doing this in person at Westford Cat, but I'm not sure how that.
I don't know.
Okay, but we know that it's happening on the twenty-fourth and seven thirty, it'll be available for, for people to participate. On the twenty-sixth, at noon, we're going to be at Cameron Senior Center. On February first, we're going to be joining the Friends of the Library at four thirty, that'll be a Zoom meeting. We're currently talking with Westford Rotary, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and Westford PTO to, to schedule times with them as well, too. Our goal is to join meetings that people would already be participating at, as opposed to asking people to do something extra. However, that being said, we're also open to having additional meetings and additional opportunities, too. So if you are connected to an organization that you think would very much like to ask questions and get more information from us, reach out to either me or, or Kristen Lass and we can work to schedule that.
And just in case someone's just tuning in for this meeting, the difference here is that we are legally required to only be giving information. Like, this is not advocacy.
That's true, thank you very much, yes, I've said that before, too. Thank you for reminding me the things that we have said and we haven't said.
Yes.
Yeah, so the roadshow is really to talk about what the, what the impact is, talking about facts, sharing that information with, with the, with the voters so that they have an informed decision, not advocating for a specific outcome. So that's something that we have to keep reminding everybody that as public, as public employees.
Don't have personal opinions, but we just can't.
Employees, we can't do that.
Got it, thank you, yeah. And we could maybe add LPAC to this list, right?
Oh, yeah.
We could, yep.
Maybe you would join to LPAC, CPAC, or something.
Okay, and then we, we could just leave the, for anyone tuning in tonight.
We're halfway through that.
So, um, next week, we are planning, it's, this one's not on there, but on January ninth, we are expecting a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Select Board, which I think is here.
It'll be in this room, yeah.
This room, I think. And then January sixteenth, which would be our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is again on a Tuesday, I think, with the Monday holiday. And that is when we're scheduled to vote because when we go into our hearings with the Finance Committee, that's just our policy that we would have a, an approved budget. And those take place throughout January and February. The Finance Subcommittee, the Finance Committee hosts those meetings on Thursdays and they.
They actually start on the eleventh, so the, the Finance Committee hearings begin January eleventh and they'll be every Thursday.
Yep.
Just different departments will be meeting, and as you're both nodding to me, is the list of which departments, oh, do we have it? Okay.
So the eleventh is like Public Works, Tree Warden, Water Enterprise, Stormwater, Stormwater Enterprise, Culture and Recreation, Recreation Enterprise. The January eighteenth is Westford Public Schools. January twenty-fifth is Health and Human Services, Public Safety, Ambulance Enterprise. February first is General Government, Land Management, Debt Service, Risk Management, Capital and Revenue. And that should be all on the town budget website.
Yeah.
So.
We've also been trying to link our budget websites as well, too. Kathy Mucci has done an excellent job of kind of helping us have a landing place for all of our budget documents. People have questions and interest, uh, questions or they're interested in looking at more of the information, they can get it there.
Yep.
And then Town Meeting will be March twenty-third.
Great, thank you.
And then May seventh is the townwide election.
Correct. Okay, so we're going to move on to the budget hearing that needs to open with a motion.
Oh, so moved, or?
Sorry, I'll read it then.
Oh, okay.
Motion to open the public hearing for the FY twenty-five school budget.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor. Okay, so what we're going to do now is, and this is an opportunity for the public to ask FY twenty-five budget-related questions. Please try to limit your comments just as you, as we see a lot of interest. If we want to get some students up first, since I heard midterms are maybe coming, and we're running a little behind. We, the committee and administration will do our best to respond to questions, especially if we saw the questions ahead of time and were able to pull some data. Otherwise, we'll just do our best, figure this out together. Just make sure you introduce yourself and give your address, and if you're on Zoom, raise your hand and we'll try to flip back and forth. Not everybody wants.
I have one online.
Hello, Jeffrey LeFlem, eighteen Poly Road, private citizen. So I'm here with my colleagues of the Westford Academy Performing Arts Council, once again. Once again, just to reiterate, we're here out of concerns to the proposed cuts to the Performing Arts Department and Visual Performing Arts. I would like to ask some questions about where we can make cuts, but specifically to program coordinators. I am in no way doubting the importance that program coordinators serve in our school district. I have very good relationships with a few of our program coordinators. It's just, I have questions, first of all, you said earlier in today's presentation instructional coaching. I'm very curious as to what that is. And then why are some of our departments only two or one program coordinator for the entire district versus some of our other departments that you mentioned today being a K through two, a three through five, and a six through high school? But most importantly, in the best-case scenario budget, where we do have this two and a half override, why are we prioritizing the positions that do not have direct interaction with the students? Once again, I'm not in any way trying to lesser the responsibilities and the importance of our program coordinators. It's just, I also, as a student, know the impact that a teacher can have on a student versus I have not had much impact put on me by the, by the program coordinators. So I'm just very curious as to, just to reiterate, what do you mean by the instructional coaching that they give? Why some departments have more coordinators than others, and if we can consolidate that? And why we're prioritizing these positions that do not have a direct impact on the student experience?
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey. So with, I will say, the curriculum coordinators, one of the things when we talk about instructional coaching is the professional development that they provide, okay? So all of our curriculum coordinators provide professional development to the teachers, whether it's during our early release time, whether it's during their specific content meetings that they have once a month. Those are just one example of it. They also often will push into classes and actually model different lessons for teachers, working with students, providing support in the classroom as well, too. So those are different ways in which the instructional coaching might look, and it is different, I think, across all content areas. The second question is.
Why are different departments handled differently?
Okay, so that's a good, I.
And that's just going back to the conversation we were having earlier.
That's right, that's right. I will say, I am not sure when we established having a K to two, I mean, K to twelve visual and performing arts coordinator and a K to twelve health and wellness coordinator, but those are the two that are K to twelve. They're the only two that are K to twelve. All the others are divided in some way, whether it's six through twelve. There is a, there, we have a world language coordinator who is six through twelve. But then we have STEM and ELA and different content areas that are resem, that are represented throughout the entire district in different places. I will say in one degree, the, the model in which the, what the general education classroom teacher at the elementary level is responsible for providing the instruction that they're responsible for providing to the elementary students, it's so vast that I think that warrants having multiple people who are helping support them in that way, which is different than the visual performing arts and even health and wellness. Because those departments, those individuals are still specialists K through twelve. I don't know if that, I still don't know historically as to how we ended up with that, but I would just say that that is how, that, that is one way in which I think those demands are different. I, I wouldn't necessarily say that we're prioritizing one over the other because there's significant reductions in, in order to maintain the prop, two and a half constraints. When we looked at the initial reductions that we have based on the, our, our override budget, our needs-based budget, right? Which is what I've talked about. We've done it in the way that we've, that we, that I've consistently done that for the last couple of years, which has been, we were specifically looking at student enrollment and looking to see what changes might be warranted based on student enrollment. And what hasn't happened, student enrollment has changed, and what hasn't happened is we haven't necessarily looked at all the different programs that exist at Westford Academy. And so we said it's important that we look at that. And when we looked at it across all of the different departments, when we look at all of the class sizes and the enrollments that exist right now, the department that has the lowest class sizes are the visual performing arts, or the visual performing arts, different sections as well, too. So that's why we looked at that and said, is there another way in which these ensembles can be looked at? Or these other courses can be addressed, whether they're combining sections, combining levels, doing different things like that in order that we can, I think, better, be, be better stewards of, of the public money? And that, that was the approach that we took. I would agree with you that from the student perspective, absolutely, the people that you interact with most are the teachers and they're the ones who have the direct impact on your learning. There is no doubt about that. Teachers have the greatest impact on everything that you do. I would say all of the adults who are in the classroom with you, for that matter, right? Even the different education support professionals and, and people who are helping with those skills. When we start to peel back every different layer, you know, you start to say, okay, well, this has, this, this next ring might not have the same impact. But what we do know is we do know the support that the curriculum coordinators are providing to teachers and what would be placed on the teacher's shoulders without them. And so that's sort of the other, that, that's the other side to that coin, if, if that makes any sense.
Yeah. If you don't mind, I'd also like to just quickly speak about the sections that you've been mentioning, specifically from a performing arts perspective. We would most certainly have no problem combining our actual classes. For instance, for the band program and for the chorus program, we have an A block freshman class and a B block of everyone else. We would have no problem combining those classes. The issue that we would face is our faculty being forced down to the part-time position. That goes hand in hand with their time requirements being reduced and those sections being combined. That is where our main issue stands because if we reduce these positions to halftime, or not halftime, sorry.
Less than full time.
Less than full time, thank you. Then we face the risk of very high turnover in these positions as we have seen in the elementary band level. And that has also been a factor as to why our enrollment has been suffering as of late is because of this very high turnover. We, it is very hard for the teacher to actually make a connection with the students and to make progress with the students throughout their multiple years of enrollment. So that's been harming our program for a few years now, and it's now coming into effect. But also if that happens at the high school, our music program is very well-renowned and I, I think that if, if that hap, if our performing arts teachers at the high school level are forced to a less than full-time position, a similar turnover effect will happen.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
Good evening, I'm Si, ten Lakeside Terrace.
Thanks.
So I'm a senior at WA. I'm also the chair of the Westford Academy Student Senate. And for those of you who don't know about the Senate, we're an elected new branch of student government that represents student voice from grades nine to twelve. So tonight I want to speak about identity, the identity of Westford Public Schools. WPS has worked so hard to be the well-oiled machine we see before us today. Clubs, sports, teams, competitions, the works, we do it all. Whether it be awards won by DECA, the Ghost Rider Band, or Mock Trial, we are unique in every field. This is the identity of Westford Public Schools. Students love to go to class because they have teachers whom they look forward to learning from. They observe passions with each teacher and the way that they present, and they make that passion through their own organizing clubs with the help of faculty. Students here are guaranteed to find a community wherever their interests may lie. We produce passionate, career-driven individuals. This is the identity of Westford Public Schools. The pandemic hit us hard, administration was under a lot of pressure just to keep up with day-to-day work and more and more clubs stopped having advisors to run. People that were interested in fields could no longer explore it. The sense of community that WPS had began to dwindle. We are just getting it back. Students are starting to fall in love with learning again. Whether it be theater arts, musical performance, law, business, linguistics, or medicine, every student now has a place. We're finding our footing again. The presented budget cuts will take that away from us. We will no longer be able to provide a community for all of the students at W. We will no longer be able to provide a community for all of the students at WPS, because we will no longer be strong enough. Without a place to explore these different fields, our culture will be fundamentally different. We'll end up as a school that produces people that are confused. Students will end up in fields that they aren't happy with, and we won't know where their identity lies. The enrichment that WPS offers to learning will be snatched from their hands, and learning will become what it was like during COVID, a chore for students. This is not the identity of Westford Public Schools. These are irreversible damages. The student body of WA is terrified, and we don't know if we can bounce back from these cuts, and the thought of that looms over our conversations throughout school. Now, we recognize that school committee has to create a budget, and we recognize the severity of the situation, but we are asking you to please help us continue to foster passionate, career-driven individuals. Please help us keep our identity.
What, why don't I take a pause here and we'll go to Zoom for a minute?
Megan, your Musers, oh, there you go.
Hi, I'm, sorry, um, technical difficulties, I'm sorry, I couldn't see the person. Um, Megan Atcroft, eight Timberly Lane. Um, I am a parent of high school students at WA as well as a fourth grade teacher in our district. Um, the students are so well-spoken, I wouldn't dare to say anything that hasn't already been said by both of them, except that I hope people are watching, because the reality is the money just isn't there. So however we craft this budget, there is just simply not enough. So I hope people are watching, because an override must be passed one way or another to preserve the identity, the identity of, of Westford Academy and our schools, I completely agree. Um, and to what Jeffrey said, um, I was gonna say something very similar about, um, really our district vision and focus, particularly at WA, has been on mental health. And seeing the list of cuts to programming, electives across all subject areas, potential impacts to the arts, to sports, um, it's extremely concerning that the supports and outlets that keep those students, our students at WA mentally well, the thing, are the things on the chopping block. Um, I'd like to ask that the proposed, um, staff cuts and changes to programming are being prioritized exactly as Jeffrey said, specifically through the lens of student experience. Um, the people that are in front of our kids, the people that are teaching these classes, bringing these electives to our students, coaching these sports, inspiring them to do all of these unbelievable things. Um, we've obviously all heard the old, you know, death by a thousand paper cuts, and we go through the budgets with a fine-tooth comb when there are budgetary impacts that are devastating, but, um, I do think that we, this is so critical, that we need to look at every single item with the question, how does this serve our students? Um, a quick comment about the presentation of the MTSS to students. Um, as a teacher, I can tell you that for that to fall on teachers, should the interventionist be removed, would be devastating and is frankly completely unrealistic, coupled with the fact that we may have larger classrooms and more students to service. Additionally, and this is where my question comes in, this brings me to the idea of redistricting. And so my question is really about that sort of elephant in the room as it relates to budget and to services. Um, the idea of one academic coach per ele- elementary school, at our current configuration, that means one person serving at one of our schools for third grade classes, and at another of our schools, eight third grade classes. That is not okay. It's not equitable. It's not possible. It's not the same amount of time with students. Um, so, so my question is this, the MSBA letter, um, for the Robinson feasibility study, um, phase, or, yeah, uh, it states that the invitation for the Robinson Elementary School is for grades pre-K through two, and the potential during the feasibility phase to examine the consolidation of the Colonel John Robinson Elementary School with the Abbott Elementary School to serve grades pre-K through five. As we know, the MSBA process is a lengthy one lasting up to five years. Um, and that's really just the feasibility study, that's not any of the build or modification to buildings. So my question is, does this invitation to the eligibility period and that language indicate a long-term plan of redistricting to K five schools? And if so, with this, these two budgets in mind, would a redistricting of this nature happen prior to waiting out this MSBA process? As it could certainly offer consolidation of services and cost savings in administrative areas and transportation. We can't afford to wait to see if the nine buildings that we pay to maintain, that we staff, that we have services in for all of these students, um, is going to be affected by an MSBA loan. So my question is, is this going to be examined separately from this as a way to reduce costs and potentially have much bigger savings in the long run for the district?
Thank you, Megan. So, um, the short answer is yes, as we are looking at whatever potential outcome that might happen with the MSBA, we need to also be considering what that impact would be on the other buildings within the district. The, the challenge is that until we know more about what the outcome will be with the MSBA, and so for, for that aspect, as we've, as we've been invited into this eligibility period, that begins in August. And so next year, we will be working with the MSBA to establish the initial eligibility documents, the different educational planning that, that they will be asking of us. And then if then, i- and then we need to then consider a feasibility study for that project. And that could then take, I'm trying to remember if it's another year, the, with all the different modules that take place. Um, before, it, the outcome of the physi- feasibility study would be giving us that information as to whether the recommendation would be building a new school, or whether it would be, um, uh, renovations at a, in existing school, um, or just bringing things up to code at an existing school, or making no changes at all. And so at that point, we would then be able to see, okay, well, this is the direction that we're heading in, and that's when we would truly be able to say, what would the impact be on the rest of the district, and how can we be preparing our other buildings to be ready for a pre-K to five transition? The other reality, though, is that we could have one building that's pre-K to five, and then two other different sister schools that are K to two and three to five, or pre-K to two and, and three to five. If, if financially we weren't able to make the adjustments in the buildings that would be necessary to support those students, so it's it, it becomes quite complicated. I hear your urgency, and I understand what you're saying, but a great deal of that is still um, dependent on the support that the MSBA would be willing to provide us based on what they think the recommendation should be.
I appreciate that. Very quick follow-up. That all makes sense. However, the, the urgency is should this not pass, and greatly gut, for lack of a better description, the services that we provide to our students that are so critical. Currently, we're able to, thankfully, appropriately staff our different three through five and K through two buildings based on need a little bit and caseload. If this happens and those services go away, and those interventionists, as an example, are replaced by one academic coach, there is nothing equitable about an academic coach servicing the sections at Abbott, for example, versus the sections at DAY. So my question is, would there be something considered to address that? Because that is such a huge equity issue currently.
Yes, Megan, I think we would need to look at that. We would look to see, do we need, wh- what we, what we've recently tried to do with the intervention model was to actually send the interventionists where the need was greatest, where it was identified, instead of just automatically housing people just to house them in one space. So while we're, and it might be difficult only having one person per school, I think you, you bring up an excellent point, it might even, um, it might even echo Catherine's question as to whether the recommendation of one academic coach per building is efficient, um, or i- i- or is appropriate. Still not being the recommendation that we would prefer, um, one of the things would, would be that we do know that the physical, the physical, um, plants that we are operating with this year will be the physical plants that we're operating with, with next, next year and the year after that as well too. So I do know, at least for the next couple of years, our buildings will be the same buildings that we're, that we're looking at. But I think we'll, we'll take your comment into consideration, and we'll, and we will consider that, because we want to make sure that we're, um, we're, we're utilizing our resources as effectively as possible.
Thanks, Megan. Switch, are there any other hands?
Okay, so one of the things that you said was the resources that, um, they might be willing to provide, like, are those financial resources?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do see another hand on Zoom, but I'm gonna switch to in the room for a few more. I know you all didn't just come to watch us.
I am Patty Wong for Birchwood Drive. Um, you all have received emails from me. I apologize for sending them on like Christmas, New Year's Eve, I think. Um, a lot of stuff has already been discussed, so I'm gonna just kind of pick some things that I wanted to talk about. Um, I just want to first refer back to the last school committee meeting, when Catherine and Chris both actually touched on the department electives that actually are more supportive to a wider range of students. Um, specifically, I completely agree, and I specifically want to focus on VPA, um, electives and co-curriculars. Um, I've been looking at a lot of data. Um, I'm hoping it's accurate. I've recently learned that some of the test, the data that's uploaded to DESI is okay, because I did have a question about FTEs and also about course-taking for arts. So ironically enough, I'm super interested in VPA, uh, data, and it turns out that that's basically the only department that's on DESI that actually shows very specific information about enrollment, uh, for different student groups. And so, um, one of the things like, like we had talked about last time was that, um, those courses and co-curriculars do serve a very wide range of individuals. Um, and that includes group, uh, in- individuals that are, um, receiving sped services, as well as, uh, people that are considered, or students that are considered high-needs, which includes, um, low-income, economically disadvantaged, EI, former EI, and students with disabilities. So it's a concerning group, and it's a group I'm sure that there's a reason why it's a student group that's evaluated. And so when you look at that data, and you look at the VPA courses, um, that are, uh, and you look at the enrollment information and completion information, you see that there is actually an upward trend. Um, you also see that, um, compared to all WA students, that the, the percentage of sped kids and percentage of high-needs students are, um, higher when it comes to students that are actually picking these VPA classes. Um, also important to note is that often you have sped kids who actually only have one elective available to them to fill in their schedule, because their other elective spot is taken up by academic coaching or, um, skills, uh, study skills. And so these kids only have one elective to pick from, and they are choosing to put a VPA class in there, and I think that speaks volumes. Um, the other thing I want to talk about is there, there is admittedly a downward trend as well, as you guys have noticed. Um, so what I've seen is that it's upwards up until, uh, twenty twenty-two, the year end of twenty twenty-two, and then it did drop in twenty twenty-three at, last year. Um, and some of the things that I've been thinking about is like, what's changed? And I think that there are other things that changed, but the big thing that screams out to me is the PE policy that impacted the class of twenty twenty-six when they started, um, WA last year. And, um, when we, the policy itself, basically, um, previously, students were allowed to defer their, um, PE enrollment until the following year, and that's a half, half-year course requirement. Um, and that would give them the ability to choose a full-year elective like VPA, uh, VPA course. Which actually, when you look at the course catalog, VPA courses, especially music, um, do have a higher average number of full-year courses in comparison to the half-year ones that you see for other departments. Um, and so, uh, the reason I mention this is because, and I almost, I think I'm losing my train of thought, so bear with me. Um, the reason I'm mentioning this is because, um, the policy was changed, and the only year that students are allowed to defer um, is now their freshman year, but then they have this health requirement. And so they are ready, they still have to do their health requirements, so now they still have this half-year elective, half-year elective spot to fill, which again, is not a full-year elective spot. So you see a lot of students that are taking half-year, that are enrolling in concert band, but can only do it for half a semester, um, or half a year, sorry. And so I'm not sure how that factored into the enrollment information that you guys were looking at. But, um, what I'm really concerned with is just understanding why this PE policy was made. I don't, I'm not clear on it. I haven't seen any laws change about it. Um, but I know that the detrimental impact is that these students, starting with the class of twenty twenty-six, now have to fill. They don't have, they've lost this full-year ability to choose two full-year electives. They now have this half-year elective, and I'd be really curious to see how many are doing their study halls instead of actually choosing a course. Um, and the, um, the other thing I was going to say is that I also started looking at how our policy compares to our neighboring schools. And, um, some of our schools, some of the neighboring schools actually allow students to substitute, um, a sport to meet a PE requirement, which sounds like a fantastic idea. Um, with sports, you've also got the, and the whole social-emotional learning component as well, um, teamwork, and all, and all of that. Um, and then, at the same time, when they do that, I've noticed also that their number of FTEs in the health and PE area are lower in a lot of cases. Um, and so the num- the ratio between students and, uh, teachers in the PE department are very different from ours. Like, for Westford in twenty twenty, uh, year-ending twenty twenty-three, Westford's ratio was tw- two hundred twelve students to one teacher, one PE teacher, or one PE health, it's combined together. Um, Acton Boxer was three hundred ninety-one to one, Concord Carlisle is two seventy-two to one, and Groton was two twenty-six. So that's more than half of the ones I happen to be looking at, um, which are the vicinity around us. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that, um, if we do actually decide to offer the option to substitute sports to meet PE requirements, we would reduce the number of PE blocks that are needed at WA, and that would reduce the pressure on the budget, while also freeing up blocks for full-year VPA electives and increasing sports participation. Um, I'm curious if this option has been discussed. I know it's got a lot of pieces to it, um, but my first question is whether or not it's been discussed.
We have not discussed whether we should be changing the PE requirement that was actually just put in place, like, I think it was, you said it was like two years ago.
Yeah.
Um, so no, we haven't, we haven't discussed that specifically. What is, yeah, what was beeping?
But the impact could be significant, like, um, Acton, for example, they actually have four point three, like, we have six point eight, I think. I don't know the data. I don't have any FTE data for this current year, but at least for last year, it was six point eight. Um, and we've got fourteen hundred students. Acton's at four point three, and they have sixteen hun- sixteen hundred students. So that's a lot of FTEs.
Yep.
So, um, that's a, that's an excellent question. So, I don't know if it's three years ago or four years ago, in one of the budget discussion, I actually specifically asked the TPE requirements and why Westford does not allow substitutes for PES, because what's the purpose of PE, right? It's like, kids now, why do you do varsity sports, and or do clubs, club sports? And why do we require them to actually to do, um, the PE class? So that, that actually been brushed off when I was asking that question, and I'm really glad you brought up all those questions again, because, uh, I think that's one is a cost-saving. The other is like, uh, it's embarrassing for like, the kids not doing varsity sports to be alongside with varsity, uh, athletes who can do like fifty push-ups, like, right next to you, right? So like, it's also, that, that kind of thing also like, what, what is your self-esteem? Is like, when you're actually putting varsity as, uh, athletes, and then like, regular kids together in a PE class. Um, so like, I am, I'm, I'm going to actually ask that question again. It's like, uh, at that time, you say, oh, that's a state requirement. I say, other districts may allow that, so what do you mean, that's a state requirement? So, so could you actually work with WA to actually figure out whether it is a state requirement, then how does other district get around with it, and then why are we not looking to this?
So it is a state, it is a state law. It's a state law that all students are required to take PE throughout all grades. Um, and it doesn't say anywhere in the state law that it can be substituted with, with sports. It says that a doctor can waive it, and, uh, we could, well, I'll, I can share the law with you, right? So I am curious, I think it's a great question. I am curious to understand how the districts that do allow that to happen, how they, how that works, and how they are still meeting the state requirements to that. So I think that's a great question. I'm not sure the conversations that went into the development of that, so that's gonna take us a little bit more time to just kind of unpack what was the full rationale for the change in the, in the requirement in the first place, what was the impact, but the state law does clearly say that everyone is supposed to, it's a required course. But the state law does clearly say that everyone is supposed to, it's a required course.
At that time, I looked it up, like, it's nothing required. It's saying some, the language definitely is not required, because even at that time, I challenge that assertion.
It's also not specific to every year you have to take PE.
And then, and then the other example.
I just want, I just want to tell you.
Wait, wait, yeah, roll the tape. Hold on a second.
It does. MGL Section, MGL Section 3, Physical Education, Section 3. "Physical education shall be taught as a required subject in all grades for all students in public schools for the purpose of promoting the physical well-being of such students. Instruction in physical education may include calisthenics, gymnastics, and military drill, but no pupil shall be required to take part in any military exercise if his parent or guardian is of any religious denomination conscientiously opposed to being armed," or bearing arms, sorry, "or is himself so opposed, and the school committee is so notified." And then the only other, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. The only other one is with medical, with physical education. So I think it's a valid question. It is a required course. It says that it's required. That is the state law. So I am, I am truly intrigued as to how other districts interpret that.
Because the real, because the real concern at the end of the day would be that there would be students who would not be able to receive a high school diploma on the basis of physical education. And I, as an attorney for kids, have seen children who have not been able to graduate from high school because they did not complete their physical education. So I don't want us to do something stupid.
Yeah.
Go on the record.
Acton Boxer has been doing that for probably at least 20 years.
Okay, hold that thought.
And this isn't authoritative, but I know when this conversation's been had before, the question of substituting, you know, varsity sport, I think, one, it's not physical education, right? It's exercise, it's good, it's healthy, but it's not physical education in the strictest sense. But the other thing I know has been claimed many times also was that because we charge an athletic fee, that there was an equity issue with allowing that.
Ability to play a sport instead of taking a class.
As a substitution. But again, I, given what we see in the state law, I'm not sure that.
Still, I don't think it makes a difference, but and we also have ways to support people who can't afford it. But it's, I, to your point, is I, I'm going to investigate that. I don't know the impact that that would have on this specific discussion, because like I said, I also need to better understand why that requirement was. I was in the district, but I will honestly say it's not a conversation I was paying close attention to, because we only had one gym teacher for 600 students. I mean, one physical education student for 600 students at the middle school. So, I mean, those numbers that you, that you shared there, I mean, the other schools in our district are, they have much higher numbers of students that they're working with as well, too. I think it's an excellent question.
Unless I can carry it away.
I just wanted to just touch again about the amount of unmeasured and, unmeasured support, SEL support that is being received in VPA courses and co-curriculars. I honestly haven't spoken to anyone that disagrees with my statement. I've spoken to, I think, some of you. We've emailed. It's, no one disagrees with that statement. And I want to remind everyone that in 2019, there was a need study that was conducted by the town-hired Health Management Associates to conduct a mental health needs assessment to identify gaps and barriers in the town and school. And in those focus groups, they identified that there were heightened concerns that students, tier-one, tier-two students, who are those that require support, like social skills groups, were not getting the needed support and will become tier-three, which means they then get, go escalate to individual group counseling. And at WA, they have access, they may be given access to the SEL therapeutic classroom, which I actually didn't know anything about. So I kind of learned a little bit about that, and I'm fascinated, because that would have been awesome at Stony Brook. But it basically, it's a classroom that actually represents the largest caseload for WA sped educators, and it is at capacity. And it has an open-door policy. It's supported by dedicated staff. Students experience, that students that are experiencing dysregulation and needing social-emotional support can find support in that unique classroom. I seriously could argue that the band orchestra room, the PAC stage, the theater arts classrooms are just as crucial to VPA students as the SEL therapeutic classroom is to the sped students. And just again, going back to this, this assessment that was done, one of the recommendations was that we needed to improve the social-emotional learning by hiring a full-time SEL coordinator and creating an SEL school task force charged with the oversight, monitoring, outcome, measurement of SEL programs. I appreciate that the director of sped was renamed the Director of Sped and SEL. However, I don't recall anything about the school task force yet. Totally get it. It was December 2019, so our priorities changed, understandably. But the, and the report clearly identifies that, but, but even now, like, the report still clearly identifies that SEL learning and support need to be a priority. Reducing staff from full-time would likely cause turnovers that rival the five band teachers that we had at the upper elementary students in the last seven, eight years. At the high school level, this type of turnover is akin to having like a new manager every year at work. It's a new coach every season of your sport. And the lack of continuity is going to destroy the program and the delivery of any social-emotional learning and support. So I definitely want you guys to consider that. And the last thing, the last question I have is that I remember a few years back, we talked about Latin, and somehow Latin wasn't cut, and it was a beautiful thing for everyone that was a proponent for Latin. It was fantastic. My kid loves Latin, so it worked out great for us. I'm curious how that happened, because that seemed like it was almost like a done deal. It was going, it was not going to be included, and then suddenly it was. And so I know we're super focused on this, on the override. I'm 100% behind the override, but I still think we need to evaluate what's included, or what's excluded, actually, from the budget, if the override does pass, and that is why I'm so focused on the VPA FTE reductions.
The Latin was F, hmm, the winter of 2020?
It was FY21 budget, right? So, yeah, it was.
Do you have any?
If I recall.
Commentary you'd like to share?
Tom can come up and talk. I think that's when, as we got closer, or later in the process, and maybe after we got the state numbers, we were able to move some things around. I don't remember if we voted.
I thought it became a Spanish teacher.
No, they're two different, it was part of the same. There was still, a teacher was still eliminated. The recommendation at the time was to eliminate a Latin position and have two Spanish positions at both middle school, because that's what the student, that's what, that's what students wanted to be taking. But those classes were, students were not allowed to take it. The impact would then also be the reduction that would take place at Westford Academy as that program, the students weren't taking it at the middle school, was sort of the conversation that took place. But what ended up happening is the Latin teacher, it became a reduction in the Spanish teacher instead of a Latin teacher.
So the reason I ask is because I get this sense, and I got the sense from the last meeting as well, that it's pretty locked down as far as the budget reductions are concerned. Like, you've got a huge group of students here, and it's, is, can anything be done? What do we need to do to make a change here?
I'll just acknowledge your passion, your dedication. I can feel your emotion. I know everybody's here for that. I will just say that the superintendent proposes a budget, and then it becomes the committee's budget. So that is, your pleas are to the seven of us. We can make trade-offs if we have the majority of the committee. But I would just say that it's a difficult position to be in when the administrator, administration is making recommendations to us, right? And so they are seeing things that we don't see, and there's a level of trust there. We have been sent the section numbers for VPA classes. I, we just got them today. I honestly scanned through them myself. But, so we're looking at the black and white data, too. Does anybody else want to add anything about the committee's role in this?
I also think it's a very, you know, hard budget cycle this year, because we don't have a definitive number that we're working with. Really and truly, we're having a conversation here about two very different situations, and really, it is the people of Westford who will decide kind of.
She, her point is that even in the A budget, right?
Even in the override.
And I feel bad about it, because I know that, you know, the override is huge hurdle for us to, as a community, to approve. And I know that there's a lot of time that needs to be spent on that, but I'm stuck. These kids are stuck on Budget A.
And there's risk reward for, for looking at Budget A and making it even bigger, right? And, I mean, we can do the trade-offs, but I think we also have to be concerned about passage of any potential override and risking non-passage. So I think that we're very mindful of that. We're also mindful of the timeline, which we are stuck with, which is a March 23 town meeting. So we're doing everything now, and we have to have our ducks in a row now. That's not to say, and this has happened in the past, things come to light, you know, again, state numbers come in differently, different things shake out, that budgets get amended. Things get, you know, superintendent can, you know, at the end of the year, we often have things that look differently than they did even six months prior. You know, that's not something that we often do or we can plan for. But I think we're trying to hit a target right now, which is March 23. Backing that out, we have to be making these decisions now and using the best information that we have now. Doesn't mean six months from now, things don't look differently.
So the last thing I'll say is just that I know you're looking at the data for this, this past year, which, like I said, I, we don't have access to. It's not been available on DESI yet for the current year's enrollment. But there were trends for VPA, where the trend, it was trending upwards. And again, special ed, as well as the high-needs student population, are choosing these classes at higher rates. And they could be choosing, I think we talked about last time, because of the class size. That is a factor, and so I think it's really important just to keep that in mind as well.
Thanks, Patty.
Hold on, I think Hining was gonna.
Yeah.
Oh, next.
Yeah.
So I have my name to say, but I'll keep it simple and focus on one thing. My name is Hining. So I live in 118 Carlow Road. So I understand, I mean, these days, it's a budget balancing that's very tough stuff for all towns, not just us. And I believe you are, you are focusing on the priorities and the, how do we spend our resources as our priority? And so do we as parents. So my friends and me and recently, we're discussing this budgeting for the, for the town, for the district. So we have a strong feelings urging you guys focusing on the programs directly benefit the students, our kids. And for instance, we noticed there's a proposal suggesting like 0.8 FTE reductions in the world languages in the WA. So I would, I hope that's not Chinese program, because I know that one is FT, is a less full-time, less than full-time position. So the reason we've been careful about this one, because this is only Oriental and Asian-related program that district offers. So there's nothing else. And we were thinking, so the well-rounded education goes beyond just stamps, and expand our kids' worldview and enriches their experiences, prepare the students to have a better understanding, has respect in this complicated, globalized world reality, and also contribute to their growth. I want to keep this short. So last year, we had this lunar new year party. We have attended more than 600 people, and we have more than 100 volunteers. And many of them, and more than half of them are from the Chinese program students, program students, and Asian student bodies. So this is a vital link between the district, the schools, and the families, and the communities. So this tie we want to keep. And also, we want to, we, by looking at the numbers, I look at the numbers, the FTE program, the position we have is not full-time. And it's only about less than 0.1% of our next year's budget. But the value this program is providing is far beyond, far beyond the money itself, the percentage itself, and it's very important to the families, students, and our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Hining.
Thank you, Hining.
Is there someone still on Zoom?
There is, yeah.
So we'll take someone on Zoom, but if, if there's someone ready to go next.
Hi, Aisha.
Hi. Hi, Aisha.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi, Megan.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Thanks, Megan.
Hi, my name's Megan O'Connell, 44 South Shumpstead Road. I'm a parent of five current children in the school district, and one graduated this past May, or actually June. I'll try to be brief. I know everyone's put in a lot of effort into this budget, into both with and without the override. There's been a lot of people very passionate, talking about, you know, the effect of not passing an override, and I'm glad to see all of that participation. I'm not going to talk about, you know, my personal thoughts on the override, except to say, and I don't think many people would disagree, that in this environment, I think it would be a very difficult thing to pass an override of, of any amount, you know, after two years of high inflation. My question, though, is, you know, in looking at the variance of the budgets for both with and with the override, the 2% and 7% budget, you know, one thing started to, you know, strike me. And so I looked back over the budget from fiscal year 2016 through 2023. Those are all actuals. And over that time, the total budget increased 21.6%, which is not unreasonable. But as comparison, the classroom teachers only increased 13.2% over that same timeframe. Yet, school leadership, buildings increased 27.1%, and transportation, 54.1%. So my question is this, and I know, you know, given the timelines and when the town meeting is scheduled, that there's not a whole lot of opportunity to do, you know, massive structural change in the budget. That being said, you know, if the committee votes to support the 7% budget, therefore require an override, is the committee and is the superintendent and administration prepared to talk about? You know, have they looked into where savings could be made in some of those other, you know, big-ticket items? Like I said, the school leadership and transportation. So this is, again, not a one-year problem. It's, it's a problem when you look at over, you know, a long timeframe, those increase at a rate much, much more than classroom teachers. And shouldn't classroom teachers be one of the, if not the, at least one of the primary focuses of what we're all doing? So, thank you.
Thank you. Megan, if I, if I could ask only, if you wouldn't mind emailing me the way in which, or what you're looking at as you, as you put that together, because by the function codes and in the categories, I would be, I'd be interested, I'd be interested to look at that. I will say.
Sure, I can do that.
When we, when we talk about, like, as you're breaking down the different departments and the different categories, that is actually one of the things that we looked at very specifically in the budget task force. And we looked at the way in which our spending in Westford compared to all of our comps. So while I can't answer your question about the increase since 2016 and those percentages, what I would say is that I would be curious to look at what those increases were like in other towns as well, too. Because when we looked at the actual spending for the different categories, ours was very low across the board in comparison to all of our comps. So I don't know if that helps, but I'd be curious to look at how, in the way you're looking at. I appreciate the fact that you're looking at it over time. I just wouldn't have necessarily have, have looked at the increase in the same way, I don't think. And I think Valerie wants to say something.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add that my quick thoughts would be, first of all, that transportation is out of our control.
Well, that's true.
We receive bids from a very low number of companies, and we have to boss our kids. The administration did, did benchmark low compared to other districts, but some of it that showed a little bit high was in our building level administration, which is.
Which is kind of what Megan.
Right, which circles back to the consolidation conversation, which is we can't change.
We have more buildings than others.
Yes, right. And there was another one, oh, about the classroom teachers, which I think in a roundabout.
To our point.
Roundabout way speaks to where the situation we're in right now, which is that our Unit A was taking 2% COLAs for years and years, and we ended up behind our peer communities.
Can we just clarify what a COLA is again?
Sorry, cost of living adjustment. Thank you so much.
Can I, can I follow up on the transportation? Because I was part of the Subcommittee on Budget when we went into a very in-depth meeting about transportation. And one of the things that really struck me in that conversation was the cost of gasoline really, really impacted
True.
our, our costs. And so in talking about things that are beyond our control, the figure that Megan is referencing also factors in a, an. the figure that Megan is referencing also factors in a, an enormous increase in the cost of gasoline.
Good point. Thank you.
And the 27% in building leadership, would that partially be accounted for by the, the change in the assistant principal role?
It could.
In taking the student support, where student support leader would not have maybe fallen under billing. Now, now we've added, we've basically shifted the role. We didn't add any personnel. We shifted the role.
The FTE would have been broken up among several different schools.
It's interesting, and for anyone, that's the elementary change from where there was split assistant principals. And now each building has one because it's a split role with the student support leader for that school. But you raise a good point, which is that sometimes, like, looking, like zooming out, right? Is like an interesting data point, but you lose what changed from year to year. And sometimes there are real narratives behind the numbers, but spreadsheet...
It's also, the other thing that I was just gonna add is that when we, when we look at the details, when we look at it from each year as we record, the first thing we look at, and Jenny's done a great job, is we specifically look at the percentage growth or, or decrease in each category. And we look at those percentages and sometimes it'll be an outrageous percentage. And then you realize the cost was also super low in the first place. So that's the other reason why it'd be great, Megan, to see specifically just the way in which you were looking at it. Because it might help then, some of the categories, you're right, the percentage might be greater in one category, whereas the overall amount might not be as significant. So it's, it's just a, a good way to make sure that we're all, we're looking at it consistently.
And I would just add one more point, which is that I think the nut of her question, which is, what are we sort of doing long-term to think about the, the situation we're in and changes that we can make? And again, I think we went through the 18 to 22-year-old program change. We, you evaluated our in-district...
Transportation.
Special education transportation, saw that we could do that more efficiently using a different method, excuse me. So those sort of invest, those opportunities have been searched for and are being looked at. Is anyone in the room? Oh, sorry, was that it, Megan?
Yeah, in the interest of time, I'll leave it at that, but thank you.
Okay, thanks. Feel free to email us.
There's a raised hand.
Okay, go ahead. I'll take some.
Tom Flamm, 18 Poly Road, a member of Finance Committee, but speaking to you as public citizen. I said I wouldn't speak tonight, but a couple of things kind of popped in my brain just for consideration with the VPA. And I know I'm a data person myself. I look at data and that, that makes sense to me. However, just a couple of quick things. My wife does the musical at Abbott and she has for the past three years, counting this year. Three years coming out of COVID, she had 60 participants in that program. This year, 97 out of 119 of the fifth graders at Abbott are participating in that musical. It's 81%. I use those stats as, you know, that growth coming out of COVID and the consistency. Along those lines, we had a student from the fifth grade come up to her in Market Basket the other day, excited to get back to rehearsal today. Wasn't excited to come back to classes, excited to come back to rehearsals. That is a key, I think, to attendance, is all of the extracurriculars that are offered throughout the district. My other thing that I was just kind of looking at is from the data of the enrollment. If I look at the senior class, they were eighth and ninth graders during COVID. Take that back to freshmen, fifth and sixth graders. I don't know if any of you are involved in music, but that was probably the worst class to try to do on Zoom. And I would venture to say that that fifth and sixth grade impact on even entering into band was difficult. By my estimation, we have to go all the way back to the sixth grade class to even start to know what the enrollment is going to be going forward. So I would just caution against making decisions now that have a future impact on a continued upward trend.
Thanks, Tom. Go ahead, we have time.
My name is Jeffrey XU, Five Suites Crossing. My question is, so I noticed that there were six FTEs cut across the core subjects, two in math, two in science, two in English. So are these going to be mainly honors classes, AP classes, or CP classes?
So in the, in, under the proposition two and a half constraints, we looked at additional reductions at WA is what you're referencing.
Right.
We don't know. We, it would, it would honestly depend on the student enrollment in those, in those sections. I mean, I do think that...
So what does current, what is the past few years of student enrollment and the projected future years suggest will be cut?
That question's actually, I think that one's too difficult to answer only because in that scenario, we know that the class sizes are going to increase larger than they have been historically, right? So whether or not it means that a loss of an AP section, if there are multiple, if there are multiple AP sections of a specific course and we lose one of those sections, or it would, it would depend on where the student need was first, as to whether there were more students who were enrolling in an honors class, an AP class, or, or a college prep class. I do think that when you are looking at the support that students, I think, benefit from the most, I do think that when you look at your AP classes and your honors classes, that students tend to be more independent and more, I think, I just think more independent in general, okay? In which case, you tend to see higher class sizes there anyway. And I think we normally try to keep lower class sizes for...
That was the sort of suggestion I wanted to make.
Yeah.
Focus on cutting, cutting more on the honors and AP because the students there should be more independent and could handle larger class sizes.
I, I, I don't know if that's exactly what would happen, but I think that that's what, I do believe that that's probably the, the path that, that we would follow, but it might not be the same across all content areas.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heidi Sporel and I'm at Seven Alley Lane. And I actually want to make just a couple of comments. Number one, as a parent of a special education student who is currently at WA, the one thing I'd have to say is what is critically important to my daughter's success today is that she did have reading interventionalists coming up, starting in kindergarten. Had she not had those supports, and I'm not saying it was always good, sometimes it wasn't, but overall, had she not had those supports, she would not be able to read today. My daughter's dyslexic, okay? So that's number one. I would, you know, beg you not to remove the reading interventionalists from any cuts that happen, okay? The issues about performing arts, performing arts, also she is, participates in those for children who have, whether it's learning disabilities or other mental health issues. The performing arts at WA are an amazing, I'll call it escape for lack of better terms, okay? But they are an amazing offering to students like my daughter who have the stress and have to deal with the stress of classes every day. And go to school and they want to work hard and they want to be accepted. And going to the performing arts classes are the time when they can, I'll call it unwind, okay? So I'd ask you to really, when you're looking at cuts there, if they come, to think about those students that, you know, actually use those, not just because they want to learn about that subject area, but actually use that type of class. Or, you know, the ceramics class or the photography class, what have you, those electives. Those electives are actually in a lot of cases for these students, serving as a way for them to regroup and get their mental health back in order during the class day, okay? But we know that the budget, you know, you have a major challenge ahead of you. I don't envy you, okay? What your challenge is going to be, and I'm speaking as a business owner, okay? There are a lot of people right now in town talking right now about the budgets. Everybody just got their tax bill. And there were significant increases due to the change in house values. The tax rate went down, but people's house rate, house values went up. Westford's a great town to live in. What I highly recommend is that as you talk to, you know, communities like this, is really show not just what you're looking at today in this budget, okay? But how do changes that may, you may be implementing today, how are they going to affect next year, two years, three years? You're talking about some of them tonight, but it is not out there in the community at large. If you're not a parent right now in town, you're looking only at your tax bill, okay? You know, there was the notice that just came out and said, okay, I think it was $8 million. What's your, what is that going to be into your tax bill? I know a lot of people are talking about that, saying they can't afford it, okay? How are they going to stay in town, especially people who've been here for a long time? So I'd highly recommend that you think about how to communicate, again, as a business owner, how do you communicate that three to five-year plan? Because people are very, very worried that they just got a major tax increase. They're gonna get, if this proposition two and a half passes, they're going to get another major tax increase on top of everything else. What's to say right now that it's not going to happen here again? And people are really having trouble paying their bills. So that's just a recommendation and I thank you for your time.
We'll, we'll take Steve in the room and then just for the people... No, 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 we'll take you and then I just want them to know that we're coming to Zoom next.
Thank you. Steve Engle, 53 Russell's Way. Try not to be too much of a one-issue guy. I seem to be emerging as such. But related to the visual and performing arts, you know, I think the concern, you know, is maybe less about the specific section changes and we understand the motivations for that. I think, I think Jeffrey, you know, phrased it well, talking about the concerns over impact that that would have that go far beyond the sections. One thing I'd like to ask about, and this is generally in the recommended budget, let's not, we don't need to talk two and a half at all, just in the recommended budget, the budget we want.
I like your optimism.
Well, not today. No, 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 in the, in the budget that you want, and in the budget that we all, you know, want to want, you've talked about FTE reductions in a variety of different places. When and how can we get clarity in that recommended budget? Not on the full-time equivalent reductions, but on the full-time employee changes. So that is the number of human beings who are currently, who came here to work for a full-time job in any position, in any discipline, who are going to be told, your job is no longer full-time. Because I think that's where a lot of the questions around impact really are coming from, because that means a lot more. How and when do you think we'll be able to get some clarity on the number of full-time employees who will be changed to something other than full-time in the recommended budget?
The, the challenge with that is that we want to look at what the students are signing up for, right? But I hear you and I think that if, if we know more, if we know something more in terms of working with the WA administration and the curriculum coordinators, that we have a more specific recommendation than just the, the number of FTEs, then I think as soon as we can identify that, we, we will share that. But I very much also want it to be as, as student-driven as possible, right? Which would then mean that we would be waiting in many cases until the spring enrollment, when they start signing up for classes. So we have to find some sort of middle ground there, right? Because that's, for your question, in some cases, and I think you're right, I think it's a question of, in, in, it's something that I'll work with the WA administration and we'll talk more about it. Because I think in some cases, the recommendations might be a little bit more clear as to what it might be a very specific position in a department that was already part-time or something to that effect, right? So I don't have a definitive answer, but I understand we want it to be sooner than later.
I get where you're coming from. I would strongly recommend that it's very soon. Having gone through cuts in businesses that I've worked with, as soon as you project uncertainty, the best people leave on their own, especially if the best case doesn't even have a good outcome. It's one thing to say, well, I'm okay if we pass an override and I, and I know I'm okay and I know I'm probably not okay. If we don't, it's a different thing to say, I don't see any scenario where, you know, until somebody comes and tells me I'm good, I'm good.
It's one of the very real scenarios that we, it's one of the things that we actually all talked about, even in, in the process of this, knowing that the reality is that just the unknown could make some of our staff just decide to go where something is known.
Yeah, yeah. And so the sooner you get to clarity, even if it's privately discussed or whatever, is, is, you know, the sooner you get to clarity on that, the more you will not have the best people go in any discipline. That, that is a comment that is not restricted to the visual and performing arts.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, where do I want to go next? I think, well, a question, and I framed this kind of poorly in an email. I'll try, I'll try to go a little bit better with it. But I, in understanding the trade-offs in the recommended budget, and if I do some straight-line kind of, I feel like I'm playing precision baseball with an inflatable bat, so my math is going to be a little wonky. But if I take the, in the budget memo, the 2024 budget, and I take this teachers line item, which is somewhere around 26 million and change, and then I look at the recommended budget and the line item for teachers there in the budget memo, which is 27 million and change. And that number includes cuts, the ones we're discussing and others, to teachers. So you kind of have to add those back in to get to what's the number for teachers in the need-based budget? The 71 million overall, I don't know what the teacher number is in that one. And I'd like to understand that. So if I look at the teacher number one specifically, and again, pardon my imprecise math here, but I add back what you really clearly portrayed as adjustments to get to the recommended budget. Those are cuts from need to recommended. Add those back and I get the teacher, classroom teachers number at somewhere around 27.6 million and change in the need-based budget. That would be the recommended plus the things that you wouldn't be cutting in the need-based budget. Which is a little over a million more, 1.1 million more than the 2024 budget. How can we understand what's in that? So in other words, is that all cost of living adjustments for people? Or are there some people getting promoted? Or are there some either new FTEs or part-time employees who are expected to go from point four to point six or something in that 27.6 number? And the reason I'm asking for that, just to get some comfort, is if I do, again, the straight-line math on, well, what is the, as it relates to visual and performing arts, what would the, all things being equal, savings be? It's around $40,000. It's not, like, that's not a budget balancing thing. So if I, you know, I, I just, I just need some comfort on, okay, if we're spending more over here, what are the drivers of that?
Okay. I was staring at you, listening intently.
I'm gonna try again. I can, I can email again.
No, no, listen, because you did talk about inflatable baseball and then I'm, you're looking at something in front of you. What are you looking at?
So I put my own...
Did you create something? Because you were saying, or let me, before I say anymore, I'm just gonna say, Jenny?
Yeah.
Did you hear what he said?
Yes, I was confused.
Okay. Then I feel better. So let me, but I think I understand. I, I, I think I know what you're trying to put together.
Current year budget.
Yeah.
Need-based budget.
Yep.
And in the middle, but close to the need-based budget, is the recommended?
Hold on, I, I want to clarify the words he's using, because I think you're, are you using like the 71 million projection from the Budget Task Force?
That is the need-based budget.
That's not what we've been calling the needs-based budget, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's like...
That was our, that was our, that was the initial projections.
Projection. I will clarify. Okay, yes.
Like if you followed the budget, sorry, jump in. But if, if you followed the Budget Task Force work in the summer, we made projections on what FY '25 would look like. That number is what was used there.
And you subtracted from that to get to the recommended budget.
But then as we looked responsibly to make the changes we would normally make, yes.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what I want to get to, is all things being equal, and, and, you know, none of the FTE cuts that are in the recommended budget.
Right.
What would that number be? And what's the delta between what we're spending this year and what that number is? What goes into that increase would be useful to know.
I will say, not, because I don't know the exact numbers that you're talking about, but I will say, in the biggest of pictures, when you, there are, there are definitely not only cost of living adjustments, the, the settled contracts, there are... there are, uh, change in lane and step and different things that, you know, happen, naturally occur every single year for the teachers. So those would be things that would be, I think, accounted for. What you're not seeing is an increase of an FTE.
Or a point of an FTE.
Something like that, that's not happening, because we've actually, like, literally, all of the FTEs are the exact FTEs based upon the actual payroll, based on the actual numbers.
That's helpful.
Right, so it's not, there's nothing like that, but, so I think some of those things, but until I actually look at it, I wouldn't, I don't know if there's, and, and it's slightly different numbers based on what Valerie was just saying, but does that help?
I think, yeah, 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 getting there. I'll think about it a little more, I might send an email. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, um, good, and last thing, I'll just leave you with, um, with some, some coaching. Youth Arts Westford decided to throw out some, a, a feedback form, and we will be sharing those results to you. We are letting people know that. We put it out on New Year's Eve, and within twenty-four hours, we got about fifty responses. I did not look at it today to see where it is, but we will share that, because I think it's useful information. One common theme coming out is it's difficult to keep with the scheduled VPA courses because of scheduling issues. So I would be very careful not to make sure that that policy change this past year is part of what you're seeing in the sections that are driving this decision that has an impact potentially that is well beyond just the section decision.
Thanks, Steve.
But we'll share the, we'll share the information.
Thank you, Steve.
Can I just have a follow-up comment to Steve's first point about, you know, I like the idea of looking at our students and, and focusing on what they are interested in, and letting that drive a lot of our, our decisions on that. But I think there's definitely a case to be made for stepping back and saying, philosophically, what do we believe in, in the district? And I think we should feel like there's room to do that. I mean, I, I know we are, but I, I want to, I want to reiterate that, I want to, and I want to acknowledge the support that the Visual Performing Arts Department has, um, has been shown by people who've come out, you know, two meetings in a row, or if not three, and, and just say that we can choose philosophically to say, "We're going to value certain things." Because we, again, to Steve's point, numbers go up and down. There's a lot of things that you can look at, special cases, especially with, with, with COVID. I think there's a case to be made for the way things have unfolded at the lower levels, have impacted numbers, and, and so, I want to, I want to feel like, as a committee, we're supporting the administration in not just looking at the current student numbers, but also looking at more broadly, like, where do we think there's value? And almost a little, if, if you build, they will come, you know, keeping the support for, for particular classes or programs, knowing that historically they have been popular, and that we think it's important to keep those around.
Actually, I had the same thoughts, you know, like you said, Kristen, just, just to voice them, is, is that I appreciate the, um, idea of student-driven electives and, and, and choices at the high school. But we have to have also a stable staffing at, at the high school, you know, longer term. And, you know, what's popular this year may not be popular next year versus the year after. And I think, you know, our students would appreciate, you know, as I think some of them have mentioned tonight and previously, that, you know, we have to be mindful of, of that staffing. So, of, of how it's gonna look.
I, I appreciate all that. I do want to make one comment, and again, I think all of this is very difficult. One, I have tremendous respect for all the students who have come out to speak. I, I really value listening to what they have to say. One of the things that I start to get a little concerned about, though, is the fact that whenever our high school students come out to speak, we absolutely appreciate and respect what they have to say, but we have to remember that our first graders and our kindergartners and our second graders aren't able to necessarily come out here and speak. And so what has happened historically is that we have been making decisions that have impacted the elementary schools, that has not had an impact on Westford Academy, and that's just the balance, and so I just share that. The idea that when we are looking at the impacts that any of these changes might have on teachers, that could also very well impact the activities that then students at the elementary levels have access to. So I loved it when Tom said that, you know, a student was looking forward to rehearsal. That was my life as a student. I loved rehearsal more than anything. As a teacher, I actually love directing after-school sometimes more than I love teaching as well, too. I one-hundred percent get that. I also know the, the safe space that exists for students in our programs. Not for all of the students in the programs, right? But for some students. But other students find safe spaces in other programs as well. And that's the challenge, that is the challenge, and that, so we have a wonderful group represented. VPA, you've come out, and you've been, you've been, I think, very articulate. If I said we were getting rid of something else that might not have as many people come out and speak, but might have a greater impact, and/or the trickle-down effect that it could have on our middle schools and our elementary schools is truly what we're trying to think of all the time. So, and I, I don't think that there's anybody in the room who doesn't think that this is difficult, so I, I, I do appreciate that. But I just think, as we continue to talk about it, one of my concerns, and I am, I mean, I'm an artist at my heart, I have been my entire life, one of my concerns is that in protecting certain things, we have been taking away from other things, and we have to be mindful of that impact as well, too.
Can I just clarify, though, on my comment, just to make sure? I'm not specifically talking about, um, the VPA, I'm talking across the board, that, that we're, we're not, you know, affecting twenty teachers down to part-time as opposed to maybe, you know, we're only affecting three full-time. I, that's the data, which I know I think we've, we've been looking for, so, so that's my, my point. I understand we have to balance it out.
Okay, we have more time to chat, but I want to just focus back on the public hearing part.
Um, okay.
Thank you.
Cheryl, you should be able to. Yep, there we go. Cheryl, can you hear us? You're on mute, Cheryl. Will I go to Kathy?
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Awesome, Cheryl.
Okay, thank you. Thank, thank you so much for all the work that has gone into this process. Uh, it's Cheryl Longton from Daniel Drive. So I know, I'll, I'll make this very quick. I know a student earlier talked about, um, the curriculum coordinators. And I just wanted to ask, um, whether the curric, do the curriculum coordinators teach classes as well? Or are they solely, you know, coordinating for the curriculum? Do they teach classes, and does it vary, you know, what, versus the academy, versus, you know, the younger grades?
Yes, yes, so, um, our six through twelve curriculum coordinators, teach one class at the, at the high school typically. Currently, our, we have a six-through-twelve STEM curriculum coordinator, because we combined those two departments, we removed the teaching responsibility for that individual, because the number of people doubled. The elementary curriculum coordinators do not teach a scheduled class based on ju, just the, well, it wouldn't be possible for them to teach one section, um, in one of our elementary schools. So some do and some don't.
Okay, so I, I'll just, um, and I, I, I really have no idea, but I'll just ask then, you know, I, I, is it possible, I, I certainly understand the elementary school teachers have, you know, a, a huge, and a lot of diverse subjects that they have to teach. But, you know, I know at WA, sometimes you have a teacher who may have, you may have teachers who have been teaching the same classes for many years. So I would just suggest that i, is this an area that we could look at more to see if we are, um, you know, if, if we could make any changes to how, how the, uh, classes are being coordinated, or whether people could take on an additional class perhaps, if they're only teaching one class now? I just, it just occurred to me that maybe this is an area that we could, we could look at potentially.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's one more on Zoom.
One more on Zoom, and I'm just bringing Kathy in. Kathy, you should be, there we go.
Hi, um, so I'm a junior at Westford Academy, I live near Forge. Um, and I just want to start off by saying, like, um, I know money doesn't go, grow from trees, it has to come from somewhere. And I understand, um, I, what I think, and I really appreciate what you're doing, holding this for all of us to learn more. Um, and what I think we as a student body are asking is that we carefully examine our budget and try our very best to do what's right for our students. Now, this is one of our times where it's our responsibility to uphold our values as a town and as a community. And I would like to remind us of our mission statement. Westford Academy, in collaboration with home and community, provides a safe environment where high expectations advance academic excellence. We are committed to promoting integrity and critical thinking while fostering acceptance and lifelong learning in an ever-changing world of society. And the part that I would like to focus and really look, is that we are supportive of students, and it is our responsibility to nurture and help them grow as people. And the things that we are considering, cutting AP classes, guidance support, all of these things, these are things that really nurture our students and provide, um, a solid foundation for lifelong learning. As most of our students do go on to post-secondary education. And it's so important, because, again, AP classes, something WA takes pride on, is how well our AP classes prepare students for college. I've had multiple, uh, WA grads come by and say how much, like, this certain AP or this certain AP prepared. And I think, um, it's so important, really, especially with, um, to just prepare, seeing as how many students are looking for that post-secondary education. And also for the guidance counselors with their recommendation letters, seeing as, um, if we look to see if guidance counselors would take more students, that would mean less personal recommendation letters, um, which is overall more detrimental to a college application. So what I'm trying to say is that we're trying to nurture our students and help them really be the best they can be, right? And, uh, I'm just asking, and I think we as a student body are just asking, we try to do the best that we can, um, with what we have. Because we really, as a school, are proud of, like, who we are and what we do. And we, we stand for diversity and inclusion, we stand for all these things. And I believe things like cutting Mandarin, cutting AP classes, um, all these things, they just work, they work against students and their, um, ability to grow and really explore and find, find themselves. As we all learn to become adults, even at the elementary, um, and middle school levels, where, you know, intervention, um, especially like for special ed is so important, what we're trying to do is create support during our crucial learning years, our teenage years, our, our childhood, to create support for a strong foundation for lifelong learning. So I just want to say, like, I really appreciate, like, um, holding this hearing, and, you know, I can see that everyone's just trying their best to really work with what we have. So, yeah, that was just my two cents.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy. One thing I was thinking about as she spoke was, on our list of ideas for outreach and information sessions, we could have, like, a student-geared one. Like, at WA.
Well, I think.
Oh, yeah, Kristen.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
And, and, and Tom, but, um, I was just thinking about that, yeah. You lean forward.
I just lean forward.
Okay.
Stretching the back.
It's time.
Um, anyone else in the room?
Hello, I'm Kirsten O'Connell, and I live on forty-four South Chelmsford Road. I graduated last year, and I want to talk about how impactful the Mandarin program was in my high school experience. So thank you for mentioning that earlier. I didn't think that I would speak tonight, but, uh, here I am. So, like I said, that class, um, the program in general from, I didn't take it freshman year, but sophomore to junior had, was like the most important class, um, in my, like, high school development, because it was such a great community there. Like, even though the class size may have been small, we had the related club, and we had, we did have four teachers throughout two years, but it was kind of like a running joke. But the fact that most of us stuck with the program through all of those changes shows how passionate we all were about the language. And, like, we also had the Lunar New Year celebration, where, like, the community came together for that. Um, I want to mention that the, the Mandarin program is like the only program that we have at WA, or in the entire, um, school district, that focuses on, like, Asian studies. And so if that program gets cut, how does that make us look? Like, in comparison to the other schools around us? Acton, Boxborough has Mandarin, Concord, Concord, Carlisle does. So if we get rid of that, how does that reflect on us? That we're not, um, showing up for the high Asian population here in Westford? I also want to talk about how, um, it might not be fair to focus on low enrollment for the class, for the Mandarin class, because it's not offered in the middle schools, as we know, so that, um, those students don't get the experience and the encouragement to take it in high school. So we, we can't focus on the low enrollment, because, um, those students don't have the opportunity to experience that. And then one other thing is that this class is good for students that ha, that struggle in, like, spelling in the other languages, like French and Spanish, because although it might seem difficult to write the characters, they look complicated, all that. But actually, the way that the classes are structured in Westford is that, um, we learn to speak and listen, but when it comes to writing and reading, it's mainly, um, like, the reading, and then when we write, we put, like, two, three, or four letters together, and then a list of characters will show up, and it's more like pattern recognition. So in that way, students that struggle with spelling kind of excel in that portion in the class. I know this was talked about when the Latin issue came up, where students were saying that those that struggle with speaking and listening excelled in that class. So in the same way, it kind of works with Mandarin, with, um, reading and writing. Like I said, the people that take Mandarin in the, in WA are passionate about that language. Like, we all stuck together, um, we had different field trips, and the community was great. And I'm here to ask that you will keep these comments in mind if you're considering cutting the program, because I think it would be a huge loss to Westford if it is cut. And so if there's any way to save the program, maybe even by, like, combining the levels, like, together, please consider it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kirsten.
Kirsten, did you come here before?
Yeah, I did, I sat over there last year.
And did you get the seal of by literacy, right?
That's what, that was my question.
I almost.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Actually, I thought I had this memory of you.
I did too, it was a shared memory.
Well, you asked it better.
She was on our student advisory committee.
No. Last year, yeah, I tried to take the seal of by literacy, but I also tried to take the AP exam, but also with that, we don't offer it at Westford. So I called, like, ten different schools and asked if I could take it there, they all said no. That's a separate issue, so if there's a, is there a way that, uh, Westford students could take the AP Chinese exam here? That would be great, um, so that people don't have to go through what I did.
I'm glad you got a chance to raise that issue.
So, uh, so that, that's one I was saying, like, WA, uh, a lot of parents, they complain, WA actually is not trying to help the students, because some of the students, for example, they take AP Chinese, they want to take AP Chinese, because they have been studying Chinese into Chinese school for ten years, right? So they want to take AP Chinese. WA says, "Sorry, we don't offer it, so we're not going to help you," right? So, um, and, and also some of the other students, like, they, they are able, so they take some AP courses outside, they want to actually to, then take the exam, but, like, got rejected or refused by WA. So those are the things which, like, were not actually helping the students. There are a lot of complaints on that.
Thanks for voicing that, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? I'm trying to go back through some of the emails we've received, if anyone saw questions in there that were.
If anyone saw questions in there that weren't voiced tonight that they think would be helpful to, um, no. Yes, please. Please do. I know you guys have an early morning. One question that I think, um, is about like, when did we, I, I think this is townwide question.
Oh, yeah.
But also relates to schools and we do have that joint meeting next week that may touch on some of these more holistic topics, but um, one of the emails we got was about like, how early did we see some of this coming? And, um, you know, what could that have meant for other decisions that the town made? Um, for spending and, and debt exclusions and studs, so.
So we, um, when we ident- the, the driving factor in all this has been what we identified as our FY twenty, as our FY twenty-five budget challenges. And that started about this time last year when, well, actually not in January, so in the, in the fall, in about November.
November, December, we started.
November, we were, um, beginning to dive into all of the data as we were preparing for the, one of the challenges was negotiations, um, contract negotiations. So we were diving into all of the comparative data, which is where we saw then that there had been, uh, there was a discrepancy and there was a gap in how we were offering competitive pay. So we started having conversations, um, as a school committee at that time. Um, we met with the select board and, and the FinCom, um, early in the, of last year of twenty twenty-three and around the winter time to talk about the concerns about, um, that, that, that difference there. It wasn't until about this time, I think, when we learned about the, um, special education tuition increases.
Fourteen percent.
Yeah, that didn't happen until about this time last year too. And that was just, that was a loving, uh, message that was given to the entire state. Um, and then as we knew that we would be preparing for transportation, uh, our transportation contract this year, we started looking at area contracts and that's when we, so it was, it was in the spring. So those were the three things and they happened basically in November, then around this time. And then I think about in maybe March of, um, it might've been a little bit earlier. We looked at and saw that we were seeing eleven percent increase in transportation costs. Um, so that's when we started bringing that information together, which honestly, all of those things had already been identified, which is one of the reasons why the select board also knew that there were, there were concerns that they were seeing on the, on the town side. And so, um, that's when, you know, we started talking about the budget task force. And then all of that work, all of those, all of those things were identified and, and, and while they were identified earlier, but they were talked at great length, um, through the budget task force process. So, um, it, it really started a, a little over a year ago around this time in, in the fall when we were working on the FY twenty-four budget. Knowing that we had concerns about the, um, the, the contracts first and then special education increase and then transportation in that order.
Thanks.
Yep.
Um, another, oh, oh, sure. Yes, please.
So Melissa Hennessy, twenty-five Boston Road. Um, that's actually one of the things that we were a little concerned about is that we didn't understand why all of a sudden there was this, we should have a five-year plan. Why did we all of a sudden have such a big crisis? Given my taxes are going up, why isn't there like some surplus back to the school? You need to lead with that. There's no way that we, that people will give you, um, an increase in taxes to say, well, we want to give more to, you know, I, I'd want to support the visual arts, but maybe somebody else doesn't, for example, right? But eleven percent increase in transportation costs? I mean.
It's actually twelve point one three is what it is. It was what the reality actually ended up being.
That should be the leading message. It has nothing to do, why should our teachers and our students be cut? When their costs, there, there are these other costs that are high and that you can't control.
Yeah.
Those things you can't control.
Right.
How you're planning to educate the children for the next five years, you know, you should have a plan for that.
Right.
But what are these uncontrollable costs that you're asking the override for? Because I think that, I don't know how, I think that's your most important.
Can I ask you a quick question though? Because I, I feel like, and it's, I, I have to remember that I have to be a broken record by that. But my point is that I, I led with this last November. I've been talking about it for over a year now and I talked about it throughout the entire budget task force. So if people aren't hearing that, I need to, and I have to remember that. So for you to say that, it's really important for me to hear that.
Cause there're going to be so many people who won't.
Some people are only paying attention once they hear the word override.
Yes.
And they're not realizing all of the conversations that got, so thank you for saying that.
Which you have to also bear in mind, the budget task force, really, the, the majority of the work and meetings happened over the summer when people are on vacations or.
They are all online and I keep sharing those, I keep sharing those links with people.
Maybe you need to fire it back up, fire the task force back up.
I had kids to entertain and keep out of trouble for the summer. I did listen.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your comment. Um, and, and actually it reminds me too that, um, the, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the, the name of the student that spoke on Zoom, Kathy. Like the, just to reiterate the broken record part again, is that we don't want to be making
Right.
the AP choices, the elective, the, all the things that make WA feel like WA. All of those things, I mean, these are changes that will change the look of.
Well, Si said earlier, the identity, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But, but there are also reductions to speak to Si's point about community identity. When she mentioned Westford Public Schools, that are also going to affect all the students across the district. So it's not just going to be felt at WA.
Right.
It will be felt across the district.
Right.
So I think that's important to share.
And as a, as a work environment for, like when we were talking about the NTSS.
Staff too, working.
What's the supports that are being, um, reduced for the classroom staff?
Yeah.
I think I regret some of the language I used earlier. I want to say that first. And I think that one of the frustrations that I'm feeling in this conversation is that there are things that we are required to do as a school district. And so the tension is that while we, we have to get kids to graduation and there, there are classes that we have to provide because kids need graduation requirements so that they can go on to their futures. And, and then at the same time, there are other things that we want students to do because that is what enriches their life. Like my, my, the students that I, uh, raised in this district, like they participated in all those arts programs and they, they were really valuable to them. The tension is that when we are faced with an economic reality that, um, you know, impacts things that we have to provide students with like transportation and, and heat and, you know, the buildings to be safe for them. It's, that's the, that's the tragedy of this conversation.
And I think, and just another thing that I think we are so in, um, in deep on, but is good to remind is that eighty percent of our budget is people. So you can't find three million without affecting people.
Right.
Right? So, sorry. Thank you.
No, you're right.
I, I really appreciate that. Um, Catherine's doing a great job looking up the emails we've received. Thank you. Um, one question we had in email was, were, and, and I, I don't want to go down a path too much. I know we've sort of talked about it a little bit, but of sort of pitting community versus community or where students identify and but, um, I've seen it at least twice, were reductions in the athletics just, um, evaluated or what would, or, or can you speak to that?
Was it reviewed?
Yeah.
Um, when we were talking about athletics, uh, one of the concerns that we have is just the ability to, I mean, I know WA had mentioned the ability to provide coaching in some cases, but we, we do have athletic fees, right? And so athletic fees are sort of driving and supporting the cost. Yes, some of the, yes, we are supporting some of the athletics within our, our, our general fund as well too. Um, our operating budget, but, um, no, we didn't talk about things like eliminating freshman sports or, or things like that. Um, it, it wasn't, it wasn't a conversation that we had had. It's something that we had talked about in the past. Um, and it wasn't something that, uh, that, that it, that came up in this conversation.
Um, and I've also seen asked, um, are we considering raising fees specifically bus fees?
School registration fees.
And school registration fees.
There was a comment or a Claire Bolts talked about a, uh, where she grew up in Illinois, that there was an additional fee, yearly registration fee for books and materials, et cetera.
We can't do that.
Yeah.
Pretty sure that would, okay.
It takes.
I mean, I think there's serious equity issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we, we are also, we, and we've talked about this as a committee, we're concerned about the fees that we have.
Right.
And honestly, the fees, when we, we evaluated our fees in the budget task force. And we found that our fees were, um, were higher than, than many of, uh, than many of our comps as well too.
And the finance subcommittee has, has reviewed them too.
That's right. So we have looked at that, but we did not, um.
And they're higher now because they, they were on average lower, you know, six, six, seven years ago, they were lower than comparable district, districts. And we've raised them a number of times in the past few years to.
I would also say it's hard to have that be part of a conversation with a potential tax increase, right? Like.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, are we? Okay, sure.
Um, so I know we've been talking about student enrollment and selection of electives. Um, and I was just curious if you guys have looked at, or if anyone's looked at co-curricular enrollment as well. Um, because what I, I'm going to guess that happens is because of that restriction, that inability to enroll in the full, full, uh, time, the full year electives that you want, students are probably going towards co-curricular activities that provide the same kind of social emotional, um, gaps that they have in their day to day. Um, I know I can speak for marching band that that has, that participation rate has gone up. Um, even though you are seeing at least from last year, a reduction in, uh, enrollment in band. So I just wanted to ask if that was something that we were looking at and how that factors into your consideration.
Um, we haven't looked at that in that, in, you asked that question. It was one of the things where I go, okay, well, we'll look at that actually. Um, but no, um, we haven't, but I, I think in, in one hand, that's, that is the example where students have, whether, whether you can say that it's a choice that they were allowed to make or a choice they were forced to make, when scheduling has made it such that students don't take certain classes and then there is, there, there aren't a lot of connections between the, the classes and co-curriculars, like marching band is an excellent example, right? But, um, there might be students who, who weren't able to take band in their schedule, but were able to participate in marching band. And we're actually very grateful that they have that opportunity to, to continue to do that. Um, but we, we will look to see if there is some correlation that, that tells a story in some way.
Is there, um, any clarity right now on which co-curriculars are going to be eliminated in their budget?
No, because we didn't, what, what was mentioned, um, and we talked about it during the last meeting. Uh, Principal Toomey had a concern about the impact that the reductions would have at, at Westford Academy based on when you lose that many teachers and the majority of the curricular, co-curricular, co-co-curriculars and sports are led by teachers.
Yep.
That you lose those individuals who are running those programs. And so we're not targeting specific programs, saying this one should be reduced because we're not looking at that as part of a cost savings piece of it because they're supported by fees. Um, it's just the idea that this impact, this, this impacts that, right? Knowing that then the other thing that I had also alluded to is that if all of a sudden class sizes have increased or just responsibilities for, for, um, providing different supports that they might not have been providing earlier are falling on classroom teachers, might they still have the bandwidth in the afternoon to do the things that they were doing beforehand? So we have not said, we think this one, this, this club doesn't have enough people in it, or this sport doesn't have enough people in it. Therefore, we're not going to run that because they've been, they've been really self-funded in, in many ways. Um, it's the impact that we recognize losing staff members could have on them.
Yeah, and just to echo something that Tom had said also, which is, um, that we're talking about like the low, you're, you're referring to lower enrollment, lower, lower participation in co-curriculars. But the, the rising ones are the ones that I think we should be looking at, which I think it sounds like you were going to look at. Because they really do influence attendance. Um, I think that it's, it's, I mean, you spoke about a fifth grader. I'm sure that we can find a variety of examples. Um, in my own household, I have examples where, you know, students may not be going to school on days when they don't have the, the classes that they, um, gravitate towards, where they feel they're most comfortable towards. Um, and similarly for the co-curriculars as well. So I, I wish there was a way that we can look at that and uh, look at that part of the data and, and how that impacts the social emotional, um, support that these kids need.
Thanks Patty.
May I ask a quick follow-up question?
Okay.
Um, also looking at, i- is in, in a similar vein to looking at the extracurricular involvement of students, have, have we looked at the difference between students enrollment in the classes that are required for, um, for their graduation versus other electives that they don't have to take, like the visual performing arts classes? Cause I feel like that would be an important data point to see. While yes, there are many students involved and enrolled in their algebra classes. Um, not many from my personal experience, I don't like math. It, it seems like there would be a very different number that comes up when you look at people who are either doubling up in a math class, which I believe is now.
It could be a po- it could, could become impossible.
Yes.
Now, if we reduce staff, we would, we wouldn't necessarily be able to.
Um, whether, uh, students willfully choosing to take an additional math class versus willfully choosing to take a visual performing arts class, I feel like that's a very important data point that should be taken into account.
I, I, I do, I, I hear you Jeffrey. I, I just want to echo what, um, what, what, what Ms. Garcia said just a minute ago, right? And that is what's falling into, it's required. And we are therefore, we, we have to provide that, right? So that's where comparing them doesn't necessarily help us, right? You're right. There are definitely going to be more students enrolled in all of our math classes and all of our English classes than in the VPA classes, right? So what we're looking at is the impact on the class sizes for those required classes.
Yeah.
Versus are there sections within VPA or the world languages that the sections might be reduced, where we might be able to combine things?
Yeah.
Um, so that's kind of the way that the conversation went there because we can't necessarily, we're not, we're not looking at the numbers and saying, why are they so much lower than the math numbers, right? Like we're not comparing them in that vein. Like we know that, we know why.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
But when we look at, um, and I, I'm just, I'm going to use the ensembles as an example.
Yes, yes, of course.
When you look at having three different ensembles in a, in a content area like orchestra or band and you don't necessarily have double digits in one of those sections.
Yeah.
You start to question, is that an ensemble? Right?
Yeah.
And you start to say, might it be better served if all of those students were together, right? You, you had the example of separating the freshmen from others and, and the students might be okay with that, right? But the impact that that has on, on potentially, the impact that that has on the teacher is the concern. We hear you loud and clear.
Yeah.
We're looking at both of those things though, and that's, that kind of becomes the challenge is when we, when we are looking at a budget and when we're looking at what we can do. And I think some people have asked the questions like, are you better off if we were to eliminate one full position someplace as opposed to creating a part-time, two part-time positions elsewhere? And those are things that I know specifically WA administration is looking at and will continue to look at. Um, where that becomes, that, that, that's not really, that, that doesn't really impact the elementary positions that we talked about. But I don't know, does that, does that make any sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I'm just going to circle back to one more email we have and then I'm going to try to wrap up unless we get anybody. We had a question in, again, sort of more townwide, but it, it, um, just wanted to sort of say it as part of this budget hearing, which was what steps are being taken to investigate potential efficiencies in other parts of the town budget? Is there ongoing work to form, formulate actionable plans to streamline our budget in other areas? One specific example this resident had was, um, a split, um, tax rate between commercial and residential. So I, I did send some answers to them, um, and pointed them to the budget task force report, which did evaluate the split tax rate. A very simple explanation of that is that it doesn't increase the tax levy, it doesn't increase the total number. It just, um, shifts the who's paying more. And since Westford's tax base is more than eighty percent residential, any meaningful decrease for the residential base would require a significant increase on the commercial rate. So, um, I just had a thought that we could add the budget task force report to that landing page link. Um, to again, like you said, now that people hear the word override, maybe, maybe find some motivation to go back and look at the extensive work that has been done to really research as much as we could think about.
And then as well, the fact we're getting time, you know, budget questions is to not just follow school committee meetings.
Right. Do you want to go back to the calendar, please?
I will go back to the calendar for you.
Okay, so. Okay, so.
Do, do you remember off the top of your head in the videos that, that, that we recorded? If, if that question is ever discussed, the text, I don't think it is. It's in the report. I'm just wondering if like, because we can also point people to.
Well, cause it wasn't a recommendation, so.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so at this point, I'll take a motion to close the public here. I wanna thank everybody for coming. The emails we received ahead of time, the questions, the thoughtfulness tonight. I really appreciate that level of engagement.
Catherine's putting up our. Timeline.
Um, meeting dates, we have one scheduled for the, for the ninth with the select board and the finance committee. And on the sixteenth as our next um, business meeting.
Motion to close public comment.
Public, the public hearing for the FY twenty-five school budget?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Bill.
I tried.
All in favor? Okay, and then we're just moving on back to our business agenda. Uh, we're moving on to personnel update, which is in the packet. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor? Great, thank you.